Welcome to the school committee meeting of May 23. I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order, May 23. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody that this meeting is being recorded and shown on NCAM, so please silence your devices. To start the meeting, do we have any public comment? Okay, seeing none, we would like to start with recognition. Dr. Gilligan?
Great. So, first and foremost, oh, I'd like to stand up here, but...
(laughter)
Because we're calling...
Just to the side?
No, no, we will. But it's pretty special tonight. Awards like this don't come around too often. In my 25 years in education, I've... This individual's one of the most talented I've ever worked with. So, the North Andover Public Schools in our district were proud to recognize Cheryl Barzak for being named the 2019/2020 Massachusetts School Nurse Administrator of the Year in recognition of her significant contributions to the health of school-aged children, not only in North Andover, but across the Commonwealth. So, Cheryl.
Do you have the certificate for Jenny Paradise? You want me to do this one? You want me to do the Jenny Paradise? Okay.
So, you did steal some of our thunder, because we also have a plaque for Cheryl, but that's okay. One at home, one in our office. My name's Kathy Hassy, and I'm actually the awards and scholarship person for the Mass School Nurse Organization.
And I'm the current president of MSNO.
And we're really honored to name Cheryl the Massachusetts School Nurse Administrator of the Year. I do know Bobby has something to say, but this, you know, the criteria for this, we get nominations, and we have a committee that looks at it, and we were really thrilled that it was Cheryl. Cheryl's been on our MSNO board. She's been the treasurer. Nobody wants to be the treasurer.[178.23][178.23](laughter) And she's on our board as co-chair of her region now. And I've known Cheryl probably as a nurse leader since 2007, and always just respect her work and her work ethic, and she knows her stuff. And you are very fortunate to have Cheryl as your nurse leader, and we know that. So, you will get another plaque from us, but we're giving her a check, too. So...
Yeah, there was no raise involved in this.
No, no, okay. Darn. So, congratulations on her.
And I also, Jenny... So Jenny Gormley, and I assumed you all knew who I was, which would be odd, because I'm not from this area of the state. And it's just, we normally give this award at our state conferences, either in the fall or the spring, and we decided to do something a little different and come to your home territory and come to the district. And we had the pleasure of awarding the School Nurse of the Year Award in Quincy, and meeting this, you know, the school committee and some of the colleagues. And it's just, it's a pleasure for us, because we're at these state meetings, we're with each other, but here with Cheryl in your home territory, and we're glad to come to you.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Bobby, I know she's here, so there she is.
And I'm being very brief. So, on behalf of all the nurses who absolutely adore and love Cheryl, and who we have had the pleasure of working under for all these years, Cheryl truly deserves this award. And to our team, Cheryl epitomizes what a leader should be. She knows how to balance being professional with being human. She challenges us. She encourages collaboration. She celebrates our successes. And she empathizes with us when we're going through hard times. North Andover is truly, truly lucky to have a nurse leader like you. And I think I'm like this, because this will be my last time speaking for Cheryl, because I will be retiring, but I will be around.
So, thanks Bobby. Bobby is retiring after 25 years, and Bobby was the first lead nurse at North Andover, so it was...
Thank you. So, congratulations, Cheryl.
It's really a team award. I'm just very lucky to be part of this community and this team of nurses, so thank you so much.
Okay, we'd also like to recognize one of our teachers who just recently got her doctorate. And I will turn it over to Dr. Gilligan.
Well, at the last meeting, I think we recognized Dr. Jim Mealy, who was recently successfully defending his dissertation. But tonight's a special night to honor Dr. Jennifer Paradise for earning her doctorate in educational leadership at the University of Massachusetts Lowell. It's quite an endeavor to do so, many years, probably as someone who recently finished at Boston College. I think I gained back an extra 25 hours a week on top of, you know, your regular work life and family life, and it's quite a commitment. We're so proud of her for continuing, not only in her education, but to the highest level, to earn this degree in educational leadership. And we would like to present this to Dr. Jennifer Paradise. She has papers to correct.
Congratulations. We'll also be recognizing our Steamed Pistachio Award winners later in the evening. We wanted to give some time for some folks that work with these volunteers to come over and recognize them as well, so they couldn't get here until a little bit later tonight, so we'll be doing that during the chair's report. And now it's time for our student report.
So, yeah, so I can start off with, kind of, this week is the seniors' last week of classes, which is fun. And like, this whole week, we've been doing dress-ups every day, kind of to celebrate our last week. I know that the first day was tourist day, and I think my favorite one was when someone showed up in a skirt and had like a coconut bra on everything, and they really went all out. And then Tuesday was a not-official senior skip day, so some kids decided to skip school. Don't know who those could be. And then Wednesday, we had mismatch day, so the advice for that day was to close your eyes and pick stuff out of your closet, and then wear them the next day. So, people showed up looking like they got dressed with their eyes shut, but it worked. And then today was our senior shirt day, so nearly all the senior class dressed up in our shirts, and it was kind of cool just to see everyone. And then tomorrow, for our last day of classes, we're going to be, everyone's going to wear the shirt of what they're going to be doing next year. So, nice way to finish it off. And we're also going to be having the big sad presentation tomorrow. I know that it's going to be pretty exciting. I know that it's going to be for a while, and I think it's, it should be cool. I don't know that much about it right now, because I haven't done it yet, but they always talk about it, so I think it'll be really cool to experience it this year.
Yeah, so also tomorrow, our freshman and sophomore class elections. So, new class officers will be elected. There are a lot of people campaigning right now, lots of posters up at the high school, so those elections will take place during advisory tomorrow, while the seniors are at their Students Against Destructive Decisions presentation. Additionally, today, a senior athlete was honored with the Gatorade Athlete of the Year for baseball, Sebastian Keen, who's like stood out in baseball. It's an amazing honor for student athletes, and it's just really awesome to have a North Andover athlete win that. Yeah.
And then, kind of, looking back, I know at the last meeting, I was like, do be nice, week is coming up, but tried to like keep it quiet, just in case any students were watching. But now I can kind of go into detail about what we did. So, our first day on Monday was compliment day, and so kind of what I think was like my favorite thing of that day is student council. We got a name of all the kids in the school, and we wrote a compliment for every kid in the school, and using those, we spelled out "you are loved." So, a similar callback to last year, but this time just with an extra touch. So, that was kind of cool. And this year, we encouraged kids to take them, and then some kids kept them, and some kids, we had like a station at lunch where if you showed them to us, you got a lollipop. So, encourage you to try to find your name. We also had, the week before, we were tabling for people to send free compliments to their friends, and we had just posters up around school with fill-in-the-blank compliments. So, very much exciting day. We also brought in chalk for people to chalk the courtyards, and in the morning, we held open the doors and played music. So, I think that one was one of my favorite days. And then this year, for a new day, on Tuesday, we did Cultural Appreciation Day, and we teamed up with Race Amity Club, and at lunch, we got a map, and we had, got stickers, and people could put on where they were from. And we also, there's, and I think Race Amity said some of the elementary schools might be doing something like this, too, where we had people write down a wish, and then we put it onto like a makeshift sort of tree. I know that it's maybe like an Irish tradition, or, and so we tried to like bring that kind of into the school, and we played some different music from different cultures. And then Wednesday, we did Self Appreciation Day, and so on this day, we had the doors in the morning. We had on one door, average, and on the other door, beautiful. And then we locked the average door, so everyone had to go in the beautiful one. And then also during advisory, we played a little video that student council made. Just, it was basically like a mock social experiment where we went around and told people in the school that they're beautiful, and just kind of got their reactions to that. And then Thursday, we did Connection Day, and that day, I was taking an AP exam, but they really worked on just trying to like get people to like share their stories. So, I know one thing they did is during lunch, they're like, write down three words that describe yourself, and then we grouped them together to be like, you see yourself as this, and other people see themselves that way, too. And then lastly, we ended with Gratitude Day, and this year was, it was kind of cool, because we'd done it last year, too, but this year, we again gave our thanks to the bus drivers with flowers and cards, but we also did the secretaries, both like the main office, guidance, athletics, special ed. And it was kind of cool, because Mr. Meehan emailed a bunch of teachers, and a lot of them ended up bringing their classes down to the gym, and we created like this, I'd say the entire gym was full, like this like fan tunnel sort of a thing, and then where they're all fans of the Patriots, so we played Crazy Train Entrance Song when they walked in, and had like a banner, and there were a ton of kids there, and it was kind of insane to see it all, and it was kind of cool, because at the end, they were talking how like, kind of similar to last year, they said like, we've been working here for 20, 30 years, and no one has ever done anything at all to this, and especially like to this scale. They were completely surprised and amazed, so it was really cool just to, you know, I think sometimes you don't always think to thank some people in the school, and it was cool to show them appreciation. So, yeah, it was a good week overall.
Yeah, the student council e-board this year did a great job planning that, too. This is only the second year that that's run, and they like instituted all these new ideas, so Caitlin's a part of that, so she did an awesome job. But also, like, between the compliment wall, which is new, the secretary's appreciation, like, all these new ideas that last year just were successful, but then like really blew up this year, they did a really awesome job doing that. So, last week, yeah, it was definitely an awesome, positive week in the school. Transitioning to something else that happened last week was the eighth grade science fair, which honors an AP science students from the high school, got to head down and judge the contestants, the finalists. There were some like really awesome projects there. I judged, and I was really impressed by the work that they did. I'm excited to see some of those kids next year, because I see future honors in AP science students, too. So, it was kind of interesting being able to go back, because I remember when I was in their shoes, like two years ago, or three years ago, and I'm a junior now, yeah. And just being able to see like how I was, I was right there, and yeah, so it was really impressive. Also, for something that's going on with AP Chem right now, we're doing trips to elementary schools for doing lab demos, and we went to Sargent School on Tuesday, where we taught the elementary schoolers, the second and third graders, some chemistry, but we had to like simplify it obviously into more friendly terms for the elementary schoolers. It was actually really difficult for us. It was a challenge, but super fun and rewarding to simplify everything we've learned and built on this year into like terms that like eight-year-old can understand, or 10-year-old, I don't know how old second and third graders are. But, but yeah, it was, it was really interesting. So, AP Science and students have gone in to see like middle school projects and then teach elementary schoolers in the last week, and it's been really interesting for me. Yeah, also, wrapping up, the music department is closing out their year this week. On Tuesday night was the final band spring concert of the year, and tonight is the final chorus spring concert of the year, so, yeah.
And I know, like, I saw like today, they started putting up the senior like posters and everything, because this is kind of their senior night, because it's the official end to them, so I know that. A lot of my friends are going to be a little emotional tonight, but I think it's really cool just to how they wrap it all up. So, yeah.
Yeah, so that's all we have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys are back at June 6th, are you all ready? You gonna be here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right before graduation.
Can you just tell about your shirt, how that came about?
Oh, yeah, so the class officers kind of made the, like, they did a t-shirt design earlier on in the year, and so then they ended up selling it sort of around Spirit Week, and then they wanted to kind of bring that back to kind of close out the year as well, so they sold them again to kind of any seniors who didn't get them prior. And so, we have these, and then later on, we're also going to be getting some SOS shirts soon, so that'll be kind of exciting, too. So, we're going to have lots of senior swag.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks.
Okay, next, we're going to take some new business, and we're going to start with our annual health presentation report, since it's the night of Cheryl.
The award-winning?
So, thank you again for the award, and it's really a team award. Most of the nurses are here this evening, and I'm just so lucky to be part of this team, working with all of you in the administration.
Thank you.
So, every year, I get to tell you about the nurses in our district and some of the things that are happening, and this year, I'm going to have three nurses give you some thoughts about what's going on in their schools and some topics. So, oop, that's not going to do that. All right, so this is the framework that the National Association of School Nurses uses for 21st century nursing practice. Of course, the center is our students, keeping them healthy, safe, and ready to learn. And the four components, the care coordination component, that's what the three nurses are going to talk about tonight. The community public health component, school nursing is kind of rooted in public health. And one example currently is, you know, the measles epidemic that's going on in the country, and school nurses deal with surveillance, disease prevention, health promotion, and we know that 99.5% of families in North Andover are all immunized. They do an outstanding job. The 24 families out of our almost 5,000 students have to write a letter each year saying why they're not, and it gives the nurses an opportunity to educate and speak to them about why it might be important to get immunized. Some other public health and community initiatives this year was the Health Fair that we had in February, as well as the Flu Clinic in the fall. On the leadership side, that encompasses some of the policies that nurses make in all of their buildings. Nurses are usually the only healthcare professional in the building, so they need to be on top of their game and know what's going on. Also, reimbursement and funding. Currently, as you know, we have all of the students that have IEPs in mass health, we submit for reimbursement, and in the 2017 school year, Nursing Services Direct Care brought in about $100,000 to the district. And starting July 1st, with some of the new regulations now, students without IEPs that have mass health, we can also bill for some services, and that will be about 780 students for our district. Just the IEPs were about 250 students. So, I think that's all on that slide. So, each year, I give you these numbers, the number of health office visits, the 42,900, that was as of yesterday. So, this year, we will probably finish exactly the same as last year, about 50,000 health office visits. That's the number of students that come into the nurse's office each, over the course of this year. There were almost 7,000 scheduled medication doses, and those are things like psychotropic medicine, insulin, anticonvulsants for students that have seizures, and then PRN medications are things like an asthma inhaler, Tylenol, or Advil. Our return to class rate's always high. I can't remember when we've been lower than 95%. Again, our goal is to keep students in school. They need to be safe, healthy, and ready to learn, like the first slide. And parent communication is always important. We're the home connection. We keep parents reassured that there are students that have chronic illnesses, they're safe in school. So, that's health office visits this year. This is a new slide I thought would be good to show. Every month, we give this to the principals, but I just wanted to make sure everyone understood the difference between caseload, which is the number of students in the building, as opposed to workload. A student, I mean, a school that has a small number of students can still have higher acuity, students with more complex medical conditions, some socioeconomic issues, if they were affected by the gas crisis that we had this summer, there could be trauma on top of some of the problems that they've already had. So, I just wanted to make sure that I shared that.
Can you clarify, so do the lines represent like the number of visits?
Right.
From students?
Student visits, yes.
If you make this slide again in the future, it would be helpful to have the numbers of students next to the names of the schools.
Okay.
Thank you.
I can give you that. And not sure why, or Lauren and I talked about why was October so high at the high school, but she remembers that every year, October is high at the high school. So, if you would go back to last year, the same thing happens. Another slide that I report every year, and I'm going to just talk about the ones that I highlighted, for allergies, EpiPens, this is just food allergies that are life-threatening that the students have EpiPens. So, that's 308 students we have in our district that have EpiPens. The number of families that report food allergies for their student is over 1,000, 1,129. So, we have 308 students with EpiPens. We've given two EpiPens this year, one to one of these students, but we also gave an EpiPen to a student that we didn't know had a food allergy. And I just want to explain, I happened to be in the building that day, and just to see the nurse, when the student came in, didn't know they had an allergy, said they had tingly lips, and just to see her take her hand, open the drawer, take the EpiPen, and put it on the table, because she just knew to be ready, because we never know what's going to come through that door, and she was so calm and prepared, and kept the student calm as they, you know, as she was doing the assessment. And, you know, the throat started closing, more symptoms started happening, and the EpiPen was delivered, and EMS was called. But a life was saved, and I just witnessed, I think that's just important for everyone to understand, that that's what they do every day in their offices, and it's pretty amazing that I was able to watch that. And the same thing happened with the students with seizure disorders. Again, we have 35 known seizure disorders in the district, but one of our EMS calls this year was a student without a known seizure disorder, and again, the nurses did an amazing job, because it was witnessed by a lot of students and a lot of staff, and people didn't know, and they did a lot of education, so that people would be comfortable with that. Anxiety, as we've talked about each year, continues to grow. We work with Nikki Murphy's group with SEL, we work with the guidance counselors, we're trying to implement programs. It's difficult for students that are anxious to learn, so we know how important it is to continue to address that. And cardiac conditions, I put that in blue, because that's going to segue to the next speaker, Beth Hasting from the middle school, and she's going to talk about supraventricular tachycardia, which is one of the cardiac conditions we see in our schools. So, you should press that button.
Okay, perfect. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Cheryl came to me a few weeks ago and asked if I'd be willing to speak about a less commonly known condition that we treat in the school setting, and so that's supraventricular tachycardia. Supraventricular tachycardia is the most common type of arrhythmia in infants and school-aged children, and it's characterized by an abnormally fast heart rate. So, children that are experiencing an episode of SVT, typically their heart rate will be somewhere between 150 and 250 beats per minute. And just to put that in perspective, a healthy heart should be beating between 60 and 100 beats per minute, and that really allows for adequate cardiac output and good hemodynamics throughout the body. Most of the time, SVT occurs without any obvious reason, and the individuals that have SVT, they're born with an abnormal electrical conduction in the heart.
Can I ask a quick question on this slide? Just, so, the normal heartbeat versus the regular, is that their regular heartbeat?
Yeah, so this is a picture. I'll go...
Or is that only if they're having an episode?
So, I'll go through the diagram.
Okay.
So, this is a picture of a heart, and basically what you see are four chambers. So, on the top, you have the right atrium and the left atrium, and what the atrium do is they receive blood, the right atrium receives blood from the body coming back to the heart, and the left atrium receives blood that's coming from the lungs. So, the blood has just come out of the right ventricle, has gone through the lungs, and now has been being received into the left atrium. And then from there, the blood passes through two valves. There's a valve on the right side of the heart, which is the tricuspid valve, and there's a valve on the left side of the heart, which is the mitral valve. And then the two chambers at the bottom are the right ventricle and the left ventricle, and that's really the working, or they do the big workload of the heart. And so, the right ventricle, when it contracts, pushes blood into the lungs; the left ventricle pushes blood into the systemic circulation. And so, when I think of the heart, I think of it as really having two systems. There's the electrical conduction system, and there's the mechanical work of the heart. And those two systems need to work in conjunction with one another. So, what happens in superior supraventricular tachycardia is the electrical impulse should be generated in the SA node, which is up in the right atrium. Cardiac muscle is unique, and that every single cardiac cell can generate an electrical impulse. But under normal circumstances, that impulse is generated in the sinoatrial node, and it's generated at a rate of between 60 and 100 beats per minute. And a student that has, or individual that has SVT, for some reason, there's an extra electrical conduction pathway, which at times gets stimulated, and it's located near the AV node, where you see the little arrow. And when that gets stimulated to contract, it actually starts contracting at a rate between 150 and 250, which results in the heart spending most of the time in the contractile state, which doesn't allow for adequate filling, and therefore decreases the cardiac output in the body. So, I hope that answered the question.
No, it does, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Don't ask anything else, yeah. So, on the left-hand side is a...
The science presentation is out now.
So, on the left-hand side is a normal EKG, so, you know, there's no graph there, but it's somewhere between 60 and 100 beats per minute, and then if you look at the one on the right, that's an individual in SVT.
Okay.
So, when a student experiences an episode of SVT, typically what they complain of is they have a fluttering in their heart, or they feel like they're having palpitations, they may become short of breath, a lot of children become incredibly dizzy, they may actually go on to pass out. They're typically pale, and they're sweating, and usually they're very anxious, especially if they don't know they have this diagnosis. They'll come into the health office feeling very anxious, that they just don't feel quite right. And then in very rare cases, it actually can lead to cardiac arrest. Usually, there's a comorbidity that goes along with that, and that is more typically seen in an older population. So, there are some triggers for SVT, and if you look at the list, these are things that our students experience every single day. So, anxiety and emotional stress, lack of sleep, physical, increased physical activity, consuming too much caffeine, there's certain medications that can also trigger an event, such as asthma medications and over-the-counter cold and allergy medicines. So, what does this mean for the school setting? So, if we know a student has a diagnosis for SVT, we're very proactive at the beginning of the year, reaching out to the parents, and so we have a plan in place for these students. students. But we have had students that have come through our door that do not have this diagnosis, and so it really requires us to do a very good physical assessment, to kind of figure out what's going on. And of course, as nurses, we don't actually diagnose, but we do put together a symptom profile, and if we suspect that perhaps this is the first episode of SVT, we will call an ambulance and have them sent to the hospital. But in general, if we know a student has SVT, we want to keep them in the school setting. And so there are some measures that we can do in the school setting to hopefully keep them there and break this episode of SVT. So typically, we have the student do some vagal maneuvers. And what vagal maneuvers do is it increases the interthoracic pressure in the chest, and that stimulates the vagus nerve, and also stimulates some baroreceptors that are located in the aorta, and hopefully this helps to reduce the heart rate and break the episode. And sometimes it does, sometimes immediately. So what we have the student do is hold their breath and bear down, we may have the student blow into a straw and lift their legs. When we know a student has SVT, we sit down with the parents at the beginning of the year, and we come up with an individual healthcare plan with the parents, and also sometimes in conjunction with the student's physician. And basically, what we come up with is a decision-making algorithm. So if a student is having an episode in school that, say, lasts ten to twenty minutes, we're going to do the vagal maneuvers. If the episode is broken, we usually will send them back to class after a period of time. Episodes that are lasting more than a half hour typically will call the parent and have the parent come and dismiss them. And of course, at any point in time, if the student becomes hemodynamically unstable, we will call an ambulance and have them transported. Another big piece for us is educating the staff in the building, so anyone that works with a student with SVT needs to be aware of their medical condition, so that if the student comes to them and says, "My heart's racing," they know in fact that this is part of their condition. Very important for PE teachers, because they might be out in a field, the kids are playing soccer, or they're running, and lots of kids might come up to them and say, "Oh, I feel like my heart's racing." And of course, it would be appropriate to say, "Well, why don't you sit and have some water?" But a student with SVT, it would be kind of a different decision-making tree. The teachers know that if a child comes to them with symptoms, that they need to call the health office and let us know that the student is on their way down with another adult, and of course, if the student is unstable, we'll go to them. And then, of course, the last piece is field trip planning. Any student that has SVT needs to have a nurse on the field trip or a parent. So another piece of the puzzle in terms of keeping them in school and keeping them safe. Anybody have any questions?
I think Andrew's afraid to ask.
That's amazing.
You don't think of heart conditions with young people often, so.
No, you don't, you don't. And we do have quite a few, you know, either with this diagnosis or another cardiac diagnosis in the classroom. And I think it's true, sometimes people look at school nurses as we're the people that administer, you know, medications, we help during the school day with injuries, you know, help kids with anxiety, seizure disorders, diabetes. But the reality is, we really never know what's coming through the door, and we really need to be prepared for any situation. So.
Thank you for that, Pepper.
What keeps it fun.
Helen.
Thank you. Nice. So my name is Helen Fuller, and I am the youth nurse at Atkinson. Cheryl spoke a little bit about caseload versus workload, and she also spoke about our high return to class rate. And so I wanted to talk a little bit about how we do that specifically in Atkinson and across the district. So Atkinson's caseload is three hundred and fifty-six. We have three hundred and fifty-six kids in the building. And again, though, if you looked at the chart that Cheryl shared, there are different, there's a different workload, the amount of visits that we see, the amount of work that goes into keeping those kids healthy and keeping them back to class. At Atkinson, it is a little bit different than some of our other elementary schools. That three hundred and fifty-six students is pretty average for our kids, for our elementary schools. But at Atkinson, we've got forty-six percent of our kids are on free or reduced lunch, and a hundred and twenty of them are in single-parent homes. So they do have different challenges and different struggles than some of our other students do. And then in September, after the gas crisis, they were disproportionately affected, along with the Thompson kids, by the gas crisis. We had thirty-nine of our students who were affected by the gas crisis, whose homes were affected by the gas crisis. So that's more than a tenth of our kids were now dealing with, in addition to already things that they were dealing with, they were dealing with a lack of heat, a lack of hot water, and the financial and time burdens that that put on their parents. So again, just a little description of why the workload may be different than what the actual case, what the actual number of students in the building is. And so our goal is to just keep those kids, as they might come to the nurse's office or come to the guidance counselor, how to get them settled and back to class. And so the number-one way that I do that, and that we all do that, is to work on teaching them skills to take care of their own bodies. We tie in the health curriculum for the state, we tie in the state science curriculums, and we really try to empower them to take care of their own bodies, both in prevention and in, once they are injured or ill, what do you do? What do you do once you are hurt? What do you do once you are sick? So I've got a picture up here. We had a college student, a former Franklin student, who's now in college. She came in, she spoke to us about cold and flu prevention, that tied in well with the hand-washing curriculum that we share. We really try to hit, especially the younger grades with hand-washing, but we really do try to reinforce those topics every year and say that this is something that you can easily take care of for yourself. And if you have a cut on your hand, that's another reason why you want to do proper hand-washing again. And it seems so silly, but it gets those kids back to class faster, and it can even empower them to just take care of that themselves. And that's two minutes out of class versus five minutes out of class. And it's all just getting them back to class so that they're ready to learn. The other thing that we do a lot is the mindfulness and anxiety curriculums that we do with the fourth graders. So the guidance counselors and the nurses work together to deliver a two-day presentation to the fourth graders, in which we help them identify what stress and anxiety is, how that can manifest itself in physical ways, and we also teach them, and by we, I mean the guidance counselor, really teaches them strategies, so that when they come to me, they don't often say anymore, "I have a stomach ache." They might say to me, "I'm really anxious about," or they don't really say anxious, they say, "I'm really worried about this math test that I have this afternoon." But at this point, they know, this is what helps me, this is my strategy that I'm going to use. And so instead of kind of working and trying to figure it out, we've really empowered them to figure out what isn't working for them, how they can use that strategy, and then get them back to class, so that we're not spending so much time downstairs in the nurse's office, we're actually spending time in class, ready to learn. So the other thing about that is that we've all started using these posters this year. So more than eighty percent of headaches in children are related to dehydration. So it's really easy to prevent a headache in a child, but it's also really hard to tell a child, "You need to drink more water." They don't want to stop, they don't care, they butt. So they come and they say, "I have a headache," and you say, now that we all have these posters in the room, they all kind of, it's a trigger for them. They say, "All right, I need to go drink water, I need to take deep breaths, and then I can come back in a half an hour." There's less of the coming straight into me and saying, "I need Tylenol, I need you to call my mom." They realize that these are things that they can do for themselves to keep themselves healthy, and once they do have that headache, to get themselves back to their baseline and get them back into class. The last thing I wanted to talk about was keeping the kids with chronic illnesses in class, specifically the diabetic kids. So right now, at Atkinson, I have two kids with diabetes. One is in third grade, and one is in fourth grade. And so been working really hard, and this goes across all of the elementary schools, just using mine as an example, but we've been working really hard with our elementary school students to really increase their independence, so that these chronic illnesses, as Beth was talking about, these chronic illnesses are not keeping them out of class. One of the things that really helps a lot is, and this was what was dinging a little while ago, was, I believe Cheryl talked about this last year, we've got these continuous glucose monitoring systems. So at any given point, the parents can be looking at what the child's blood sugar is, and so can I. So that really helps us to predict these trends. It has arrows that show you if they're going up or down, and it really helps the kids know to prevent those highs and those lows before it actually gets bad and gets severe and gets to the point where they might need to be dismissed at home. So we can treat them and get them back into class quicker. And again, I think Beth kind of talked a little bit about how, for some of these kids, like with the SVT, you are, if it's a known problem, it's a known diagnosis, you can fix it and send them back to class. And that's a really great thing that we have now with more knowledge, and especially with more technology. So the other thing we're doing with the diabetics is really hitting, setting these education goals each year with their parents and with the students. So what I've got now is that I say to the kids, "How do you feel?" When they come in and they say, "I feel low," and I say, "Well, what number do you think you are?" Before they look at their, at their meters, just really guessing and feeling like, "Is my blood sugar really low? Or am I just sluggish? Like, did I just, did I just play really hard in gym class?" And really trying to get them to listen to their bodies and understand their bodies. The second thing I've been doing is working on their diabetes-related skills. For most of them, those are things that you've kind of always heard, the doing the finger sticks, learning how to drop insulin themselves. But with the emerging technology, it also means teaching these kids how to use, how to read this, how to make sure that the sensors are attached to their bodies appropriately. And so it's really been great to see this emerging independence with these kids. And then the last thing I wanted to say about what we've been teaching the diabetics is using their skills to calculate insulin. So insulin calculations at the ages of the kids in my school are still a little bit too young to really fully grasp the complicated math that goes into doing it. But as they are at the end of third and fourth grade right now, they're really getting a better number sense of what is going into the insulin calculations, and they're saying to me like, "Oh, I think it's going to be around, my blood sugar's this, and I'm eating this, so my numbers are going to be around here." And they don't understand the division that goes into that yet, but they're really understanding the number sense that goes, that goes behind that work. And I think that's really important, because as they get older, they are going to be doing those insulin calculations themselves, and it keeps them safer, it helps them advocate for themselves, and it keeps them, with all that, it keeps them healthy, and it keeps them back into class, which is, again, our number-one priority with these kids.
That's amazing.
I've been told I'm a low talker, so.
Can I ask one, can I ask one quick question?
Yes, of course.
So this, I know, the sixteen on the slide that was, I don't know, a couple back, is that new cases or total cases? Is sixteen of diabetes?
Oh, that's sure.
Total in the district, okay.
The district, yes.
All right, okay.
But interestingly, the last two years, we've had a lot of new students.
I've heard of a number, yes.
Graduated, and a lot of new students were diagnosed, just these last two years.
Right, okay.
Because for, well, two years ago, there were one in the elementary, now it is two, four, five, six.
Yeah. That's what made me question if they were new cases or total cases. Okay, thank you. You get an easy one, so.
I tried to reach Cheryl. She was perfectly.
Nice job.
Is this on? It's on? So I'm Laura McDonald, I'm the high school nurse, soon to be getting a new high school nurse next year, so there'll be two of us. I, this year, and actually last year in January, and this year, actually last week, administered the Youth Risk Behavior Survey to all of our students at the high school. So the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is a survey developed by the CDC, and we use the Massachusetts Youth Risk Behavior Survey, or YRBS, and that was developed with the CDC and the Mass Department of Public Health. The survey focuses on the major risk factors, the risk behaviors that threaten our youth and the health, health and safety of them. So it's a survey that is given, we gave it online. The students took a Google survey, we took all the questions and put them on a Google survey, so it was easier for them to all take it, quicker and easier. We actually were selected by the Department of Public Health and DSE to be, to have some random, some classes randomly selected to actually take paper surveys and be part of the national CDC numbers this year. So they select seventy-five schools throughout the district every year, so, every other year. So we complied with that this year, well, they asked us if we wanted to be part of it, and we did. So seven classrooms took the survey for the, for the 2019 Health and Risk Behaviors of Massachusetts Youth Report. So, and then the rest of them took the survey online. So these are some of our positive trends that we saw. So I did, I did do this in January of 2018, so we compared some of the results, so I have some of those with me. We are going to take the 2019 results and have a data analysis done in the, you know, future, in the next couple months, maybe, and be able to produce a report for the public. These are some of our early numbers. So ninety-one percent of our students report grades of mostly As and Bs. Ninety-seven percent feel safe coming to school and being at school. Seventy-six percent of students have never had sexual intercourse. A lot of our students say, "Everybody, everybody." But really, it isn't that, that the case. Seventy-six percent have never, don't report it. Ninety-six percent of our students had seen a dentist at least once in the last twelve months. Sixty-six reported having a teacher in school that they could talk to about a problem. And seventy-nine percent reported having a parent or adult family member that they could talk to about things that are important to them. So these, these things are protective factors in a child's development and a teen's development, and they've been shown to actually improve the health of a student. So we do have some really good numbers, and we do have some really good numbers compared to the state as well. The Massachusetts overall reports high numbers in high school students who report earning grades of As and Bs. And their, Massachusetts number is seventy-five percent, and our number is ninety-one percent. So that's pretty good in terms of grades. Let's see. So those are our, our positive trends that we're seeing. Some concerning trends, thirty-five percent of our students this year reported ever having used an electronic vapor product. But last year, there's two questions about vaping, and they were the same as last year, even though a third of our students are reporting that they ever used it.
Ever means like?
Ever tried it, used it.
Once or whatever.
Yep, and they do have some qualifiers on there, on the question. In 2018, thirty-three percent said that they used within the last month, but this year, nineteen percent said they used within the last month. So even though that's, you know, not breaking down the data, that's just a raw number, it's encouraging, and I think probably due to the fact that we've done a lot of education of staff, students, and parents about the health risks of vaping and drooling, and it's out there in the media as well, and it's not just us doing the education. We've sent home numerous parent communications. We have had speakers come in, we had Diane Knight from the Northeast Tobacco-Free Community Partnership, I had a little note because it was a long name. She came in to talk with our staff. We, several of us in the high school and in the middle school went to a school safety conference on vaping, on vaping and other topics, but half, half of it was focused on vaping. We've had, we had the North End Police Department come in and do in plain sight. I don't know if any of you guys were able to attend that, but that was well-received, that, we did that during one of our guidance college bound junior nights. Mr. Jackson has put links to articles in his weekly parent updates. I have several, many resources on the website, and I update it frequently. Every time I get something from, you know, a reputable source that is encouraging, I will send it out to the, to the students and parents. So we're hoping that we can continue educating, continue doing some more programs around the dangers of electronic cigarettes, and hopefully those numbers will go down the next time we do this Youth Risk Behavior Survey. We have forty-six percent of our students who reported ever having a drink of alcohol, and twenty-six admitted to having at least one drink of alcohol in the last thirty days. So alcohol use is still concerning. Thirty-five percent reported having been asked to send someone a nude photo through social media or texting. That one is, is concerning. That one is, is concerning. The school safety conference that we went to, half was on vaping, half was on sexting. So, we did have a lot of education on, on that topic during that conference. Thirty, and this, and this is also another concerning, depression and anxiety, obviously, health concerns for our students. Thirty, thirty percent of our students admitted to feeling so sad or hopeless every day for at least two weeks. This is clinical diagnosis of depression, that they stopped doing some usual, usual activities. And that is also concerning. And another number to add to that is that sixteen percent of our students reported having ever seriously considered suicide. So, that's pretty concerning as well. We have felt that, we have felt the mental health component of our, our nursing offices increase incrementally over the last, you know, five years. And, and that's something that we do address every day. Forty-one percent of our students reported, only forty-one percent reported eating breakfast every day, which is also a protective factor and we, we certainly want to encourage that. Our program at the high school, we are sort of self-sustaining, but at the middle school and elementary levels, the food rescue program has come in clutch with that. So, we collect food from students who normally, you know, maybe didn't, didn't finish their lunch, didn't want it. Certain foods are, I think we've all, we've heard about the food rescue program. And we give it out to the students who are hungry. Every morning, I have kids coming in who have not eaten breakfast for one reason or the other. And we have lots of fruits available for them. So, so that's one thing that we're doing to combat that. So, those are our early numbers and hopefully we're gonna have some pretty good data for you guys in the fall.
Do we do something similar for middle school? Do we do a middle school survey?
Not yet, but that's next.
Sorry to jump the gun.
This is, this is to kind of close. We finished our last year for the Essential School Health Grant, which funded a lot of staffing and some infrastructure. This year, we were awarded, thanks to a lot of help with the nurses writing the grant, the Comprehensive School Health Grant. And what that does, it would fund some of these Youth Risk Behavior Surveys to do something in the middle school, to get the data analyzed. So, that's the plan for part of the grant. The other great part of the grant is that it will help us get a health education from pre-K to twelve level. Currently, the Mass Frameworks are from 1999, they're really old. There's new frameworks coming out in September. And I know people have asked me to, to present what the healthy relationships and vaping curriculum are. I did put up what people are doing, they're all evidence-based programs. But we don't have a pre-K to twelve plan yet. But with this grant, we have the funding to put some people in place to get that done next year. So, we have made great progress. Of course, we're, we're focusing in on these topics this year in every grade level. The Museum of Science was something that the entire ninth grade went to about vaping. And now, they're coming to us, June tenth, they're gonna come to the middle school for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So, we're doing what we can with our resources currently. But I'm very excited that next year, we have this grant that can really focus in on having a evidence-based, step-by-step curriculum that we can all support. One last slide. You're welcome. So, we're lucky that we have this group of nurses here in North Andover. We're lucky that we have the support of the school committee, the administration, that we can implement the programs that we want to do. Because, again, from the beginning, we want to support our students to be safe, healthy, and ready to learn.
Thank you very much, you guys do a fantastic.
Could I, could I just say one quick thing? So, obviously, you know, we're, we're parents and we have friends who, who have children and some of them have, have medical conditions and then we, you know, kind of see things online. I have never seen anybody comment or heard anybody comment in any way, shape, form negatively about the nurses. They are always so unbelievably complimentary, how wonderful they are, how they help their children, how they contacted them as soon as they, you know, had some form of a problem or something happening in the schools. And I think it just speaks volumes to the, to all the work that you guys do on a regular basis. Again, I have never heard anybody in any way be anything but just, you know, think the world of, of the, the care that you provide our students every single day. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
I, I could add a couple of things. I have the privilege of sitting on the Health Advisory Council, which is a group of about twenty or more folks from all over the community. The, the police are with us, the youth services are with us, Deanna Cruz Lima, whose title I can never come up with, but.
Community-wide support.
So, so it's a tremendous meeting. And a couple of things that I heard at the most recent meeting was just last week, when we're talking about the mental health concerns that were brought up about the high school. We've just gotten a grant from ECCF to do what's called Mental Health First Aid for Youth. And that's gonna be a, a training program that, that spreads out. It starts with sixteen people who are trained to be trainers. And then, they can share that information with teachers, with parents, with other adults in the community to recognize signs of trauma and signs of mental health issues. And when we can recognize those signs, we can then go to our school nurses and our, our community service coordinator, who can help folks set up whatever interventions they might need. One of the things addressing vaping, I know that the middle school is having a program come in called Fresh Look at Old Habits, that's gonna deal with vaping and, and other behaviors that are not that positive. And I know that there are signs, you know, posters and such around that are helping kids understand why vaping is, is not good for them as part of the education process. And the other thing that I learned, which was really great, as we've all struggled through our very rainy spring, our allergies have been down.
Last week, though.
Well, last year in May, we had seven thousand visits due to allergies. And this year, we've had less than half of that.
Wow.
It's coming.
It's been great, yes, it is coming.
It's been thirty degrees.
As my eyes tear the whole time, yeah.
Cheryl, I have a question. I think at the beginning of your remarks, you said ninety-six percent of our kids were vaccinated and.
Ninety-nine, ninety-five percent.
But I think you said there was twenty-four families? It's been in the news a lot lately, I think, I've been in an op-ed with the, the Kennedy clan going back and forth on something. Could you just, what, what's that conversation like? Because it scares me that we don't have, we have kids that aren't vaccinated. How does? I mean.
So, maybe, Betsy, I know that you have had this conversation with parents.
So, so, some of those twenty-four.
Can you come to the microphone?
So, three, three, three students are medical.
Yeah, so, some of these are definite medical issues where their immune systems just don't allow for a live virus to be injected. And those are called medical exemptions. Some are, are claimed to be religious exemptions. And it's really just kind of, the parents have decided that they don't want their child vaccinated because of maybe they have another kind of issue, health issue. And they really are nervous about injecting chemicals or, you know, additives or preservatives or things like that. And so, they claim the exemption that way. We do have, have very specific documentation that has to be in place and this documentation has to be renewed every year. We are, you know, and I think Kenny, you could probably speak to this. I think seeing in the community that most physicians are not giving parents an option of whether they want it or not, unless they have a specific medical condition. There are still a few, but I think it's getting less and less. And what I've seen in my school is that those who were exempt from all immunizations initially are getting them slowly. You know, it's more of the schedule that they objected to, not the specific immunization. So, my numbers have gone down every year and now I only have a few that aren't immunized.
And every year, they do, you have to give the letter, so it gives the nurses an opportunity to have the conversation.
Right.
Are there, are there still people clinging on to some of these conspiracy theories that you read about?
Yes.
Yeah?
My name's Kenny Chan, I'm the Andover, the North Andover Public School physician.
I know that it's next time, Kenny.
Yeah, so. It's a good segue. So, the good news about all of this is, you know, the vaccination rates are very high. So, and Massachusetts has like the best vaccination rates out of all the states here in the United States. As far as like preventing outbreaks, there's some magic numbers that some people quote. Anything under ninety percent is considered kind of relatively high risk for like an outbreak occurring within a community. So, we're above it. While that, that being said, you know, you, it's always best to try to vaccinate as much as you can. So, a lot of it has to do with, you know, education, kind of deep, we're constantly trying to debunk the myths. But the anti-vaccination movement has a very strong, you know, social media presence.
Yeah.
So, just trying to keep up with that is, is a challenge.
Keep at it.
Yes.
Thanks, thank you.
Good segue.
So, while we have you here, we'll just jump right out to sleep of new business and do the first reading of the appointment of the school physician.
Is there an introduction here of some kind or?
Well, every year, we have to.
I know. For, for the application of the public.
I'll read it. "The administration is requesting that the committee appoint Dr. Chan to serve," actually, Lorene, you should read it because it's the administration.
Also, I can see it there. "The administration is requesting that the committee appoint Dr. Chan to serve as a school physician consultant for FY20 at a cost of $6,300. During the 2018-19 school year, Dr. Chan provided the district with expert advice, allowing the district to respond appropriately to a large range of health issues."
How many years have you been with us?
Since 2002?
A long time, thank you.
Long time, it's been, it's been a pleasure and an honor serving. I also have to congratulate Cheryl, too, for doing a stellar job. It's, she's wonderful to work with. And it's a great nursing group. It's, they're very caring, very knowledgeable. That, that presentation about SVT could have. I couldn't have done a better job. So, very knowledgeable and very appropriate with me. In other words, they're, they're asking me very appropriate questions, getting me involved. I always have an open door policy with them, they can call me. So, it's, I always enjoy working with them and dealing with challenging cases, too.
Thank you, appreciate it.
This year specifically, Dr. Chan has helped us with some real challenging situations. He's come to big group meetings with teachers and staff about really challenging, and his insight, and he spoke with some of the physicians at Children's Hospital to help us do the right thing for the students and have the right kind of place. So, again, we're also very, very lucky. He comes to our staff meetings when we have a question about a particular type of medical condition that's going on and what's going on out in his community with, in his office, what he's seeing. Is there flu going on, is there allergies? So, it's a, it's a great working relationship that we have, we're lucky to have.
Yeah.
I, I would like to move that we suspend the rules. And, I mean, you, you think you've been here since 2002, so I don't see any reason to not vote tonight. So, I move that we suspend the rules and vote on appointing Dr. Chan to the 2019-2020 school year.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Mabley, and this is to suspend the rules. Mr. Trizzy?
Aye.
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 And aye.
So, I will move that we appoint Dr. Chan as a school physician consultant for the fiscal year 2020.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Mabley. Any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Aye.
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 And aye, so five, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, now, we're going to do the first reading, or actually, sorry, it's not a reading, annual review of the wellness policy.
So, there are no recommendations for changes to the wellness policy.
Okay.
We reviewed it at the last Health Advisory Committee meeting.
Okay, great, thank you. Do any of the committee members have any questions or comments? All right. And we're not voting on it, so.
Congratulations. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
All right, with the committee's permission, I want to take things slightly out of order here and we'll do the Prestash Awards now and then we'll go to the science presentation, if that's okay with the rest of the committee.
Sure.
Amy, would you like to come up? I think I saw her here.
Folks, I'd like to introduce Amy Mascher Monaco.
I feel you're talking.
That's what a nurse is.
You can turn the mic over.
Bring them, bring them up.
Do I need the mic?
Let them come sit with you.
Come to the table, here.
Let's put the Prestash Hallway waiters.
Yeah, I can give up my chair.
In your name.
Amya?
What an exciting night.
All right, I just wanted to thank you for having us tonight. The Prestash Award was established in 2006 to honor the efforts of Leanna and David Prestash for their dedication to the parents, the students, the teachers, the entire community of North Andover. Each year since that time, individuals have been chosen who have demonstrated extraordinary contributions to our school system and the children of the town, and they've been recognized for their generosity with this award. The individual parent teachers at each of the schools has the difficult task of going through all of the nominations and choosing one person from each, well, from the elementary level, the middle school, and the high school. And it's really hard because so many people do so much in this town that, you know, it's a very difficult task for them to choose just one. So, the people that we're honoring tonight are very special people, obviously. Tonight, from the elementary school, we have Chris Murray. Chris, would you? And from the middle school, Timmer Carlson. And from the high school, Linda Burns. Thank you, ladies. The time, the effort, the energy, the love that you put into our schools every day does not go unnoticed. We really appreciate everything you do. And you are an inspiration to all of us and you really symbolize the, you capture the spirit of what this award means. And we thank you. So, I just want to say a few words about each person and some of the contributions, some of the contributions that they've ma, made to our schools. So, starting with Chris Murray. Chris's involvement impacts North Andover Public Schools in big and small ways that are immeasurable. She's an ambassador with a huge heart and represents all that is good about our community. Some of the many things Chris has accomplished in her volunteer work within the schools are setting up a volunteer network for the opening of a new computer lab at Sargent, welcoming new families into the district by meeting with them, giving them tours, and helping them make connections. She serves as the liaison between the Sargent Administration and the PTO. She's the PTO Secretary. She's a Room Parent Coordinator, Book Fair Chair, Volunteer Recruiter, Volunteer for any and all Sargent activities and events. She's a Sargent Office Volunteer, as well as Library and Computer Room Volunteer and Volunteer Coordinator at the ABAC, where she does not have a child. She has an inclusive spirit and is the consummate team player with a can-do attitude and willingness to work for the benefit of all students. Parent volunteers look to Chris as a leader, knowing if Chris is involved, their time will be respected and they will be valued. will be respected and they will be valued. Thank you, Chris. And a few words about the lovely Timara Carlson. If it's about the children, Timara is going to be involved. She's been actively involved with the public schools since her kids started at Franklin ten years ago. Some of her volunteer involvement has included Franklin Room Parent, Franklin PTO Vice President, Franklin Social Community Committee, Franklin and Middle School Library Volunteer, Middle School Book Fair Coordinator, Active Participant in NAMs PTAc, Middle School Holiday and Teacher Appreciation Brunch Volunteer. She's served on the North Andover Soccer Board of Directors, where she also runs their in-town referee program. Timara has been part of the Teaching Staff for Understanding Our Differences Program and has volunteered for the Support Our Seniors Committee at the high school. She also volunteers at the North Andover Thrift Shop and chairs a committee of volunteers from across the Merrimack Valley that raises over four hundred thousand dollars in donations for the Lawrence Boys and Girls Club. Timara's focus is on wanting to improve things in our community to leave it a better place for the generations of parents and kids that will come after her. Thank you, Timara. Linda is that volunteer that you can always depend on, no matter how daunting the task. She's consistently making a huge impact, no matter what she's involved in. Some of her many contributions include chaperoning for just about every middle school and high school music department field trip, including one to Nashville a couple of weeks ago, in which she got five hours of sleep over five, the course of five days.
Oh, my God. A little trauma.
Chaperone and show helper for every marching band show and parade, every marching show and parade, Linda always has the North Andover Cam Camera with her at these events where she films, edits, and shares the performances with students, teachers, and the community. She is a Chair of the Mr. North Andover Committee, where she's Marketing Director, Press Liaison, North Andover Cam Liaison, and Pet Band Coordinator. She's a member of the North Andover Music Association, where she's on the Board of Directors, is the Chair of Publicity, Co-Chair of the Board of Directors, or Co-Chair of the STIPEN Committee, Marching Band Show Co-Chair of Concessions, and Vice President Elect. Linda also serves as the Co-President of the SOS All Night Graduation Party Committee, a role she graciously stepped right into when the position was unexpectedly left vacant. She also serves as the Chair of the Food Committee for the SOS and has worked tirelessly over the past couple of years to streamline the process to make it much more appealing to the next person who takes it over.
I have three more years.
Linda's dedication, hard work, and intelligence has proven to be invaluable as she has incorporated and implemented new ideas for SOS as they plan to celebrate the largest graduating class ever at North Andover High School. She does all this and more with grace, a positive attitude, and a constant smile on her face.
I'd like to congratulate all the winners, but just a few other components to the Prestash. We're fortunate to have in the crowd tonight the folks who the award is named after, David and Leanna Prestash. If you guys could just stand out back.
We also have several former recipients.
Yeah, and several former recipients here. It's kind of like the Hall of Fame. Anyway, David and Leanna were at North Andover High School when I was there in two thousand six, and I'd see them morning, noon, and night, and they represent, you know, the best of what volunteerism is and the qualities that you have, selflessness, dedication, commitment to make it a better place in North Andover, and I applaud all of you. On another particular note, I believe one of the other former Prestash winners, she may not be here tonight, sent in a note, and she asked if I'd mentioned this. Sadly, we recently lost a member of our parent family volunteer community, a former winner of the twenty twelve Prestash Award, Nancy Boldick. Nancy won the award in twenty twelve, and her husbands were proud parents of three North Andover High School graduates, Josh, Matt, and Jessica. She actively volunteered at the elementary, middle, and high schools. She was a member of the Kittredge PTO and served as the Math Facts Coordinator at Kittredge. She served as the NAMs PTO Co-President for two years and co-chired the eighth grade planning committee. She was an active member of the North Andover High School Planning and Information College Committee, which is now known as PIC. It has to have the most volunteers I've ever seen, and they do a tremendous job with, in the guidance office. She support, served on the SOS Committee, continuing the tradition of providing safe postgraduate evening and fun for seniors. She'll be missed by her family and countless friends she made during her time volunteering here in North Andover, and our heartfelt sympathy goes out to her family. So, we just thought we'd mention it. And so, our condolences to the family, and congratulations to everyone with all that they do.
Yes, and I know we have a couple, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, do we have a couple of citations too, if you want to come up?
Thank you, appreciate the invitation. I'm representing our Board of Selectmen, Chris Nobley.
Chris, you can sit down if you'd like with the microphone.
Great.
Or stand.
And we really, at the board, wanted to say thank you to really everybody who works so hard in schools. You really set the example and opened that path. And I in particular, I'm pleased to be here tonight because although I don't know all the recipients, I know one of them. And just seeing her from the sidelines gives me some sense as to what the other folks have achieved and how hard they're working, how much their heart is in this, and it's really amazing. We're really blessed as a community to have folks like this, and I think we're all really proud of that, and it just makes North Andover such an awesome place. So, with that, we have citations, and I'll read one for each of them, for Linda, Timara, and Chris. And it's a certificate of appreciation presented in recognition of receiving the school PTO, PTAc, PAC, two thousand nineteen Prestash Award for demonstrating extraordinary contributions to the educational system in North Andover and for your hard work and your selfless years of dedication and service to North Andover. Thank you on behalf of our town, North Andover, the state of.
Thank you.
So, Chris?
I'm the one he knows, so I got to hug him.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Timara?
Thank you. Oh, no, that's Christina.
No, that's you.
No, thank you.
It's just like everything else, I appreciate it. I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Dick Curran. I'm here representing Senator Bruce Taugh. I'm going to present citations from both the Senate and the House. The House Rep was not able to stay here, had another engagement. I'll just read one, but I'll insert in what you young ladies are noted for. And as I was listening to Amy talk, just one quick question. When do you find time for yourselves? You know, there's an expression, if you want something done and done right, you give it to a busy person, and definitely, you, ladies are very busy. Commonwealth of Massachusetts State Senate official citation, be it known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its, hereby extends its congratulations to Christina Murray in recognition of receiving the two thousand and nineteen Prestash Award for your demonstrated and extraordinary contributions to the elementary school education system in North Andover. And to Timara Carlson in recognition of receiving the two thousand and nineteen Prestash Award for your demonstrated and extraordinary contributions to the middle school education system in North Andover. And to Timara Carlson in recognition of receiving the two thousand and nineteen Prestash Award for your demonstrated and extraordinary contributions to the middle school education system in North Andover. And to Linda Burns in recognition of receiving the two thousand and nineteen Prestash Award for your demonstrated and extraordinary contributions to the high school education system in North Andover. Be it further known that the Massachusetts Senate extends its best wishes, its continued success, for continued success, that this citation be duly signed by the President of the Senate and attested to in a copy thereof transmitted by the Clerk of the Senate. It is signed by the Senate President, Karen Spilka, the Clerk of the Senate, Michael Hurley, Senator Bruce Taugh, and also Senator Diana DeZogio this twenty-third day of two thousand and nineteen. Congratulations.
Yes.
Christina? Another one? Who are you? Come on. This is in the house.
Thank you so much.
Timara?
That's me.
Cheryl?
Thank you.
Last, please. You must be proud of her. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
I just also want to thank you all. This is one of my favorite, this is my favorite award, one of my favorite nights of the year where we honor people that sometimes fly under the radar, but they do so much, and it's so important and so appreciated, and I'm so proud of all of you and, you know, a couple of you personally, and I congratulate you both, and I'm sure the rest of my committee.
Thank you very much.
Well done. Thank you for all your hard work.
Okay, I'd like to have the science presentation.
Ms. Marx, if you would. We should give him a minute to clear out the Prestash group.
Always remember, I knocked on the door nineteen minutes, it's twenty-seven, so around the clock. Like, Jan, right, it's so cold out. It's got, it's got, you guys, no, I know it's like, you're pulling down, you're very important, they're asking, top this question. It's like you're maybe coming.
How are you?
I'm good. Happy to have you here. But, that's so funny.
Just gonna wing it.
Yep.
So, you can talk about like your amazing sister.
How are you?
How'd the rest of that go, okay? They still going? Still rocking the guitar?
We're so good to see David and Leanna. They're in Yonkers a lot now, are they?
Ready?
Thank you all for patiently waiting.
Tonight, we have our middle school science presentation. Cara Larkome is here with the group, and she is our district STEM Coordinator. And one of the first groups to actually work on the new science standards was the middle school, and we have teachers from various grade levels here. So, this is the final year. We started with sixth grade, rolling out the science curriculum, moved to seventh grade, and finished this year with eighth grade. So, we have people here to talk about how that worked, students to share their insights on how that felt for them to go through those grades with new science curriculum, and I will turn it over to Cara so you can present what, just talk a little bit about what's going to be presented. Thank you. Do you hear?
It's not yet, isn't it?
Oh, you didn't give it to him?
Let me see, let me see.
It's constantly.
I think I have.
Wasn't linked.
I brought a paper copy.
I like it, kick it old school, love it.
I think it's in my head.
Pass it around.
Cara, what was the title?
Can I have a superintendent update for a minute?
Yes.
All right. Just so, a couple of things in the superintendent update, the science is under it, but I did want to add a couple of things today. I had a meeting, as I serve on the Board of Social Justice and Advisory of Merrimack College today, so I didn't get a chance to see them all, but I had an awesome opportunity to go to the high school to see two of the senior capstone projects, which involved a lot of research, presentation, research paper, and they were tremendous today. So, I saw one on computer science, probably one of the better ones I've seen and very entertaining, and really about how computer science and coding changed this young man's life, and I saw one on equine therapy and some of that work. So, I thought that was pretty tremendous. And then, senior intentions came out, I'm not sure if they're posted yet on the website. I think it's really amazing that we have kids going to great schools, all the way from Boston College, Salem State, Merrimack College locally, to U Texas Austin and U Dayton, San Diego State University, UCLA, and UCal Berkeley, and just all over, you know, north, south, east, and west. So, they'll be posted on the website. I think it's a little over ninety percent, you know, going to college, two or four-year college, we have several kids going into some vocational training, and very proud of the eight that are going to go serve in the United States Armed Forces. So, that is the superintendent update. Back to science.
Perfect.
Good filler.
We are excited for tonight and share a little bit about what this journey has been like, and from various perspectives, believe it or not, it was back four, almost five years ago that this started. So, it's been a four-year process in this work. And back in two thousand thirteen, they did the draft standards. In two thousand sixteen, they implemented the new standards. A few of those shifts, because the board has changed a little bit, thought we'd give you a little update, a few of those shifts, it's that, it incorporates the national science standards. So, Massachusetts decided, as we often do, to adapt them a little bit and make some, I think, some really great changes to them. They iterate both technology, engineering, and you can see from the diagrams, some math and ELA components, so really trying to bridge that gap of what are students doing in ELA, what are they writing about, how are they getting at informational text, and making sure that that's incorporated right within the standards, not just assuming that that's going to happen, but writing it right in, as well as some of the math pieces, modeling and math, we can see in the standards. They're also grade-specific, so in the past, it was grade banned, so K one-two had standards, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and it really didn't matter what order. So, different districts had the option of where they placed different pieces. So, Massachusetts realized that, that wasn't the best opportunity, especially for any students who move across the state, and so they're now grade-specific. There's also a big transfer goals and understanding. It's not just these are kind of facts that we want to know and memorize and kind of produce, but really knowing and understanding how this all comes together and what the science concepts are. They're very practice-oriented and get at the higher-order thinking skills. So, at that time, we kind of took a look at the middle school. At that point, it was layered, life science in sixth grade, or science in seventh grade, and physical science in eighth grade, and the state had a couple of different options. Again, we could, because the MCAS isn't until eighth grade, we could have stayed with that layered approach, but we found that it might be instrumental to shift that curriculum and phase in grade by grade. Our elementary stuck with just the standards that we were doing, and we're starting that transition now. That process is about the first year through, so we'll see some changes at elementary. And they started with the practices and kind of updating what standards they were teaching. So, the middle school teachers have been working really hard on this transition. We started with sixth grade, as Lorene mentioned, in our sixth. We have several kids going into some vocational training and very proud of the eight that are going to go serve in the United States Armed Forces. So that is the superintendent update. Back to science.
Good filler.
We are excited for tonight and share a little bit about what this journey has been like and from various perspectives, believe it or not, it was back four, almost five years ago that this started. So it's been a four-year process in this work. And back in 2013, they did the draft standards. In 2016, they implemented the new standards. A few of those shifts, because the board has changed a little bit, thought we'd give you a little update, a few of those shifts, it's that it incorporates the national science standards. So Massachusetts decided, as we often do, to adapt them a little bit and make some, I think, some really great changes to them. They iterate both technology, engineering, and you can see from the diagrams, some math and ELA components. So really trying to bridge that gap of what are students doing in ELA, what are they writing about, how are they getting at informational text, and making sure that that's incorporated right within the standards, not just assuming that that's going to happen, but writing it right in, as well as some of the math pieces, modeling and math we can see in the standards. They're also grade-specific, so in the past, it was grade banned, so K-1, 2 had standards, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and it really didn't matter what order. So different districts had the option of where they placed different pieces. So Massachusetts realized that, that wasn't the best opportunity, especially for any students who move across the state, and so they're now grade-specific. There's also a big transfer goals and understanding. It's not just these are kind of facts that we want to know and memorize and kind of produce, but really knowing and understanding how this all comes together and what the science concepts are. They're very practice-oriented and get at the higher-order thinking skills. So at that time, we kind of took a look at the middle school. At that point, it was layered, life science in sixth grade or science in seventh grade and physical science in eighth grade. And the state had a couple different options. Again, we could, because the MCAS isn't until eighth grade, we could have stayed with that layered approach. But we found that it might be instrumental to shift that curriculum and phase in grade by grade. Our elementary stuck with just the standards that we were doing and we're starting that transition now. That process is about the first year through, so we'll see some changes at elementary. And they started with the practices and kind of updating what standards they were teaching. So the middle school teachers have been working really hard on this transition. We started with sixth grade, as Lorraine mentioned, and our sixth-grade teachers were the first ones to start with an integrated. So they're seeing life science, physical science, and earth science, all within sixth grade. At that time, seventh and eighth stayed with either physical or earth science, but they started to update slowly their, the standards that they were responsible for in those grades. So they made some small shifts to their curriculum and instruction. And then you can see in that timeline, little by little, each year moved up. So our current eighth graders are the first year that started in sixth and had that spiral between sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We worked very closely with about 30 different districts in a cross-district back-end group. So we took those standards, actually the draft form, and developed curriculum maps for every single grade level, K through 12. You can see in that diagram on the right, it has our, the standards are on the left side, and then we unwrap those standards and really piece out what are those essential skills and knowledge that students need and how are they going to be practicing that. And then there's layers of assessment and then the actual lesson learning plan of what that looks like. So many of our, six of our NAMs teachers participated from that very first spring. Erin actually started and she was a volunteer at Thompson, so we got her hooked right at the beginning. But we were really lucky that the teachers that you see in front of you were part of it from the very beginning. Over four years, we developed those maps and we keep meeting periodically. So we actually have our last two days this summer to do a final wrap-up, which, I don't know, I think it's going to be a little sad, but you'll hear from them that it's probably not a goodbye, because we've made some really good connections with those other districts. At the department level, there is a website that they've been using, not only to keep everybody updated on what's going on in each grade, but also you'll notice there's a tab for observation opportunities. So if something's doing something that they think would be beneficial or interesting for another colleague to see, they'll pop that in there and then they have that chance to see each other. In addition, this January, when we had our professional development day, the middle school team and the high school teachers all met for a period of time and they looked at the strand maps, which really show the progression of the standards right from sixth grade up through 12th grade. They also have those K-5, which our elementary teachers have used and looked at to see that progression of how those little incremental changes occur throughout their science experience. So they've been doing a great job looking through and working hard on building this curriculum and implement in the classroom. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues here. I think Erin's starting, yes, ahah.
So as Cara said, for the last five years, we have been attending the cross-district science meetings during the school year and also over the summers, where we've been working with science teachers from across the state to develop grade-level curriculum.
All right. Since we've started implementing this curriculum, you know, for three years now, you know, like Cara said, we've developed these great relationships with so many teachers across the district, especially obviously at the sixth grade level. And so we continue to just keep connecting with those teachers and we share lesson plans and rubrics and assessments. For instance, when we were just out in March together, we created a rubric for one of our new, new projects that we're doing on cell models. And so then we're able to pop that into the curriculum maps for everybody else to use if they, if they would like to. So we've also discussed the changes that we've made to the curriculum. For instance, we keep discussing at length of how we're going to, you know, change the order of our units that we do each year. So we get to, you know, talk to other teachers across the state to see how they're doing that. And so, you know, we're constantly making changes and, for instance, our matter unit, which we are ending with this year, we might pop it in to try to do it a little bit earlier in the year. So again, we've just made great connections and it's been a wonderful thing to be a part of.
So a little bit about how we use these units. They basically drive our instruction. We meet as a grade level in sixth grade, seventh grade meets together, eighth grade meets together, and they drive our unit instruction, our, all our lesson planning. We come up with common assessments, common lessons, common activities, and then we, I'm sure they can hear me, kids, they can hear me down the street, ask the kids. Then we, you know, we are always looking at student work, looking at what we did, what worked, what didn't work, you know, in, in trying to revisit the maps. Did we meet the objectives? Did we cover the standards? Did we incorporate all of the skills that the maps have asked us to do? And then we revise our lessons for the following year. You know, this really didn't work, this fell flat, this was great, we got a great student response for this, and we use that to drive our instruction for the following year. As Christine mentioned, we have developed relationships with other teachers across the state. We've shared resources with them, we keep in touch by email, we ask them, you know, what worked for you, we had, we had trouble with this, how did you do it? And we, we really have made some valuable relationships that have helped us to roll out this new curriculum. I think the most important thing that we have done is the collaboration, the collaboration with just our sixth-grade team across the whole NAMs science department, the collaboration with the high school, the support we get from George and Cara. It's really been instrumental in helping us roll out this new curriculum and, you know, there's, there's been some missteps along the way, but we definitely have the support of each other and the whole science department and our supervisors that has helped us along the way. So it's been a positive experience.
As the old lady of the group, I did the, I did 18 years of life science, just the life science. And then, so it's the last three years that we, that we're doing all three of the sciences. And it was a little scary at first, but kind of exciting too. I kind of, I think we all were ready for a little change and to kind of dust off some of those science concepts that we hadn't looked at for a while. And I think it's been an overall really good experience. One of the things that I think is really, I think the state did a pretty good job in terms of where they put things. And for instance, genetics. When you're talking about heterozygous genotypes to sixth graders that just want to know when lunch is, it just was so above their heads and I think every year, we really struggled with teaching certain concepts that were just a little developmentally over their heads. And now it's in eighth grade where it should be. So like I said, and we've just, I can't, I just have to say again, the collaboration, thank you to whoever way back when gave us this time in the day to be able to collaborate like this, because it's given us the opportunity for every student to have the same exact experience. And I think that's what, you know, that's, that's good.
And so, I'm the eighth-grade teacher of the group, I'm CJ Jordan. So you wonder, in eighth grade, you can look back now, back down to seventh and sixth, so how did it work out? How was this whole process? So we mentioned before, we used to do life science and earth science and then physics and chemistry, so physical science. And now we do it each year. So what do these eighth graders look like? How are they different? Well, I was worried when we were going to start implementing this, that the students wouldn't have the same depth of knowledge, that they wouldn't go as deep into each unit, that they wouldn't spend a whole year on something, they'd only spend a couple months. But as eighth graders coming up, now they have more breadth of knowledge, but they've retained that depth. So I'm having students that are preparing for the MCAS and they took it, what, last week? Yeah. They, uh, it was this week? Oh my God! It has!
Time flies.
So we usually run a little review before MCAS, but these kids, they've been reviewing each year. They built upon the building blocks that they saw the years before. And so as an eighth-grade teacher, I feel like this has been a new successful model. And it's, it's to the benefit of the kids, I think. So these two are going to tell you a little bit about their experience. They'll maybe talk about sixth, seventh, and eighth grade and maybe a little bit about the STEM fair, which is the eighth-grade capstone.
So throughout the science curriculum in sixth grade, I liked a lot how there was the big collaboration of all the different things, because I tend to get bored when we're standing on one whole thing for a long time. And I liked that we started out, I think we started with space, and then we just moved on to different things. And there were some I liked more than others, and I liked that we got to spend time on those, and we got to move along and not just stay on one big whole thing. And then seventh grade is a lot like that. We, I don't think we started with it, but there's a lot, big volcano unit, which I feel like lasted forever. And then we had like, and then we had a, we had like an earthquake unit, which I felt was super short, but we learned a lot out of it. And then eighth grade was, it was probably my favorite one out of all of them, because...
Excuse me?
There was a lot of hands-on things. Beginning of the year, we had like this big dry ice thing and we would like play hockey with them. And then I ingested one, but we won't talk about that. And then we like put one in water and like a bunch of fumes would come up. And we had this thing where we like put a can, a can, we put a can of water on a hot plate and then like evaporate the water and then put the can in this cold water and it imploded. And we like learned about how that worked. And then we ended off with the STEM fair last Wednesday, which I feel like was a good way to wrap everything up, because you got to choose what part of science was your favorite and you got to do anything on it, or do something you wanted on that certain subject. And well, what I did is I built this cannon that when you light hairspray on fire, it shoots a potato like 200 feet out of it. And I wasn't a finalist, but it did, I felt like it was good, I was happy with the results of it, and yeah.
Similar to Brian, I felt like every year, we kind of built on what we learned, like it kept you on your toes with learning everything. Like you weren't bored, as he said, almost. You kept learning about new things and you'd have to keep learning and then diving deeper into things as you went on in years and recalling, oh, I remember this from last year. And then I feel like as we progressed to this year with all our MCAS practices and stuff, you realized, oh, I really do know this stuff and you do remember it. So it helps to learn everything bit by bit, because you're not bor, like bored that you're not going to remember it and you're just staying on your toes so that you'll remember in the future. And I feel like kind of what Brian said, the STEM fair was a good wrap-up of it, because as you kept going along, you picked, oh, I really like this, maybe I'll look into it deeper. And I started in something with plants under colored light and whether that would affect their growth. And there was things that maybe we didn't go into as deep of with like light color and stuff, but I learned more about it. So I feel like this curriculum gives you a good base where then you can expand on it in the coming years.
You have all your fingers still?
Well, I think this is really exciting. I have two kids that went through it the NAMs way, and I definitely can hear how important it is and how exciting it is to be able to, to circle in and out of different subjects, because you may not love life science. And so to have it for a whole year and not have it interspersed could be a challenge. So I think that's really exciting. I always encourage people to use the term STEAM instead of STEM. The A stands for arts, you have science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. I have two students who are studying science at the college level now, and one of the things that I've learned is that Americans are so amazing with creativity. And so our students that graduate from college or, you know, go into the sciences, when they have the art piece, when they have the creativity piece, that's where they have really the advantage on the world stage. And all of you as students will be competing on a world stage. So America has such a strength in arts and creativity that I would encourage you to include that. And I know all your posters at your STEM fair, which will soon be a STEAM fair, they have all included your, your best design, your best art, your best presentation. So thank you for that.
So I would just say, my oldest went through kind of the layered approach and, you know, had a wonderful sixth-grade year.
I concur with that too. But I really have noticed a difference. My middle son is a current seventh grader and just the variety and his interest in it, I think is really kind of, not that the oldest wasn't interested, but it's just, you know, the changing of that, I think, has really been great. So I'm not going to say it was probably easy, but you know, a lot of hard work to kind of get there with all of that. So thank you for, for probably those extra nights and miles and all of that stuff, but it seems to be making a pretty good difference. Thank you.
So I have a question. I also have, I have an older child and a younger child, so my junior was one who got to go look at all your projects and she did come home and say that she saw some pretty seriously impressive stuff. So she would have also gone through the old model and is still a big science person. That's her favorite area. But I'm excited to hear what you guys got, and you did an incredible job speaking, so thank you for, for sharing with us. The hard question, you said you all met in January with the high school, so what does all of this mean to that?
Good question. So the state was proactive and did not change the high school MCAS until next year. And so the nice thing is, I've been meeting with the biology teachers, our freshmen all take biology and that's the MCAS, science MCAS that they pass as freshmen, which is also nice, because that way sophomore year, they focus on the math and ELA. So we've been starting to meet to map out, they've been looking at the standards and again, much like the seventh and eighth grade did, started to incorporate and update, but they couldn't remove some of the pieces that were out of the new standards, because it was still a possibility of showing up in MCAS. This year's MCAS was just the overlapping standards for them and next year's MCAS will be slightly modified to be fully aligned with the 2016 standards. So we've been meeting to plan and look at those standards. We just had a session, I'm going back with them on the fifth, and we've mapped out actually one of their, they all luckily have a common planning time, as you said, which is not always the case at the high school. So during final exams, we're going to take one of the final exam blocks and sit down and start working through. We have those maps from across district and some of them took part in them a little bit. So we're going to use that as a jumping off point and then infuse what they're doing and shifting and really taking it as an opportunity. I think they're excited to revamp some of the curriculum that they've done. We're also looking to align the honors and CP a little bit better. So right now, they're, they all encompass the same standards, but might do it in a slightly different order. So we're going to align the scope and sequence with those pieces to really focus on the most important topics first and then work their way through. So it's a, it's a shift and they'll be working hard and take some good notes from these guys of what's working well. And I think they're really excited. We're, we're excited and anxious to see the MCAS scores, because again, you know, like these guys did a great job mentioning that it's not the, oh my gosh, I need to think back to what I learned in sixth grade. I've been learning all these pieces all along. So we're, we're, fingers crossed that, that that, you know, shows up in some of our assessment results as well, and then that will carry over into the high school.
That's great.
Awesome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
We never did the minutes.
Like all of them.
We can do it at the end.
We'll just finish the superintendent. Finish up the superintendent's report, then we'll do the minutes.
I would just say, last in the superintendent's report is, we did something a little different this year. It's probably like you with the Prestash, probably one of my favorite days of the year was the Special Olympics this year. And we went on the road. It's the first time we've been on the road. We went over to Andover, they hosted. And so that was slightly different, but it was an amazing day. They had the state police there to lead the opening track. They had all the kids from North Andover and Andover, and everyone had the same T-shirt, but we had a, Lorraine, what color was that? I'm not good with colors.
Kind of a salmon-y color.
Salmon.
Yeah.
And they had a blue. And it was just an amazing day. It was an amazing day for, yes. It was an amazing day for parents and kids and I was really proud that, you know, Andover put it on. Some of our kids said, you know, that we, they have a few kinks to work out, they didn't have as much Stasi's pizza or coffee or waters at all the tents, but they'll get there. And it was just awesome.
I think in years past, we've had a lot of high school students that have been able to volunteer, is that right? Did Andover get to have that kind of an opportunity this year?
Yeah, they did. And I noticed, we had several volunteers from our school that were there.
Oh, great. Well, you were able to take the volunteers on the road.
Yeah. You know, some of the things that were slightly different is usually at North Andover, we had the band, the cheerleaders, you know, most of the police and fire come down. And Andover was excellent. They were excellent for the hosting for the first time. And, you know, with all the unified stuff we were doing, I was asking, you know, why isn't Lawrence here? Because we've been doing a lot with Lawrence too. But theirs was the next day and they have 650 kids of their own, Special Olympics. So I think it was somewhat of a logistics issue. It was pretty amazing.
Sure. And is the plan to alternate each year?
We're back at, we're back at home next year in North Andover and pretty exciting.
Yeah, I must say, my, my kids went, have gone the last couple of years, because they're at Kittredge, so they're bummed they missed it this year, but I'm glad next year they can go to that.
Great. Thank you. All right. Our consent agenda, we have two meeting minutes to approve.
I'm sorry.
I recommend we do them separately.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 9th, 2019 School Committee meeting as presented in the packet.
Motion made by Ms. Mabey, second by Ms. Picard.
Motion made by Ms. Mably, second by Ms. Picard. Any discussion? All right. Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
Mr. McDevitt?
I will abstain.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll say aye. So four O.
Four O one.
Four O one. Bev will get it.
And I'll make a motion to approve the, um, tiny minutes from the May fourteenth, twenty nineteen, um, school committee meeting as presented.
I will second the tiny minutes.
Not tiny in font size, just in length.
Yes, in length, right.
Motion made by Ms. Mably, second by Mr. McDevitt. Any discussion? Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
Mr. McDevitt?
Aye.
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 And aye, five O. Okay. All right, for the chair's report, um, Bev had sent everybody a doodle poll on dates for our summer retreat. But as of this afternoon, only Ms. Mably and Mr. and Dr. Gilligan responded. Um, so if you guys could just weigh in.
I responded earlier.
Because she doesn't have it then? You just, you responded before this afternoon?
I, yeah, I responded the first nation sent it out.
Okay. She doesn't have, she doesn't have that.
The submit button, button looks funny as well.
I, I missed the submit button, too.
I saw it.
When I checked, I, I only saw Amy's, too. I hadn't even.
Okay.
Even Greg's wasn't there when I checked.
I'll do it tonight.
So this is news you lose. You guys going to set the date without us or?
Or, and they're July dates, right?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
One day.
They've got sixty-two.
Yep. Yeah, so that will be from eight to three. So it's going to be an all-day thing. Thank you. Um, I also, we had talked in, I think it was October, about doing a survey. And we put it in the packet and then we tabled it to the springs. We wanted to wait until after the snow days, see how many we used. So.
We don't have any of those.
Um, I know. So, um, I'll ask Bev to recirculate that. And we can either vote, we vote to send that out at next meeting or is that something, I don't know how.
That was a survey about, um, the vacation.
Yeah.
All that stuff?
Yep.
So is the idea to send it in the summer or the fall?
I would say summer, like, end of this school year.
We've already set the calendar, though, so.
It would never, it was never going to take effect for next year anyway.
For the year after, but we need the data before we can.
Right.
Yeah, because we should do the calendar in October anyways, right?
No, in January.
Yeah.
February.
Yeah. I, I think one of the things that we've noticed is when we tend to stuff at the end of the school year, um, not in one fall. So we could send it at the end and also, again, at the beginning, keep it open. Um, and maybe we could take a look at it, um, you know, make sure it's everything, the questions that you.
Yeah, I mean, we're not committed to the last survey per se.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
Dust it off.
All right. And then Helen, do you have an update on the coalition?
I do. Um, so I mean, there's not a whole lot to say. The coalition met again, um, this week on Tuesday. Um, we had a presenter from the Y W C A, um, who spoke to the community, um, on the sixteenth of May. Um, and she also spoke to the coalition about the different services that they have to offer. Um, we drafted our mission statement, which we'll likely refine and approve at our next meeting, which is in June, on June twelfth, um, which is right after graduation. Uh, but usually the seniors are around that week for a variety of, um, recognition events and other activities. So we, we hope that that's a, a week that will, um, accommodate. It's just really impossible to get a date before graduation, um, for the coalition to meet again. Um, there were fewer people at this meeting, but there was still an excellent cross-section of the community. Teachers, um, the youth center, uh, parents, student, um, administration. And, um, we hope that at our next meeting, we'll be able to set our, our goals and objectives, um, for, for next year's work. So that's, um, it's ticking along.
Thank you very much. Okay, old business. We have the second reading of the overnight trip to Switzerland and Italy.
Ms. Marks, if you could.
I think there were some questions. Um, so I can give you some, just some information that I've gathered and hopefully it will answer the questions, at least those that I was aware of. So, um, the trip is, um, being sponsored by high school teacher Carrie Harnoyes. Um, it is through Education First, and she's a trained leader through Education First. So she has actually gone through the training they, that they provide to be a leader with that group. And, um, so the high school has done other trips through this, this group. And we have other teachers who are trained leaders, um, most notably, uh, Christie Morley, who's done the Dominican and the Ecuador trip that, um, Cara had just gone on. Um, when they have talked to Principal Jackson about taking trips, he wants them either tied to the curriculum or tied to a service project. So, um, no trip is, gets past Principal Jackson if it is not in one category or the other. So this Global Leadership Summit is, um, on the impact of sports and wellness. And Ms. Harnoyes is a biology and nutrition teacher. So this ties into the curriculum, um, around those topics. So she, you work with students from around the world at this global summit. And they have a design process that they use and they discuss, they will be discussing the impact of sports and nutrition on wellness. Um, they'll experience a culture of farm-to-table, um, food, cooking classes. Talk about how sourcing and eating local ingredients can make a difference in overall health and wellness. So that is how it is tied to that piece of the curriculum. Um, the summit is actually in July twenty twenty, so it is not during the school year. So, um, it would not require any substitute teachers, um, and students would not be missing school to attend the summit. So, and I, I don't know whether the price was on the last piece. It is a.
It's not.
Okay. It's a thirteen-day trip and per student is, it is five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And that includes the airfare, food and hotels, travel between locations, tours, the tour guide through E F, so the person that they provide, visits and tickets to all the sites. Um, and E F requires that six students attend the trip with one chaperone. So for every six students, you'd need one chaperone.
So a minimum of six students.
Yes.
And a school committee chair, right?
Won't be you at that point.
In her, her, um, so Ms. Harnoyes's main duties are really keeping the group together, making sure, you know, helping them with the passports, border crossing, making sure that if there are food allergies amongst any of the students, that dietary needs are met. Make sure the water is safe to drink. Um, she does bed checks at night. And I remember hearing about the bed checks in, um, Ecuador. So making sure kids are doing what, are where they, where they're supposed to be and doing what they need to be doing. Um, they, the tour guide is with them at all times. Ms. Harnoyes would act as the main contact with the tour guide, but the students also have access to the tour guide at all times, too. So it's not like they're separate and apart from that.
So here's a couple, I'll, I'll, I'll.
Kick it off.
Say something. So this is difficult to me, because, um, I think that it's fantastic to offer as many opportunities as we can to our students to pursue, um, other parts of the world, other topics about, you know, leadership with people from around the world is a pretty fascinating opportunity, right? Um, five thousand five hundred and fifty dollars is pretty staggering. Um, it would certainly close out a lot of our students. I know we have, um, support that we can offer. Um, and again, it's optional and it's really up to parents whether or not they want to do this. But I feel like we're more and more inching toward these massive trips. And I would love to see a leadership trip, but I'm wondering if there's something that could be less extensive, twelve or thirteen days, um, of four of which are the leadership part. So I'm torn about this, is what I'm trying to say.
Um, so I have never voted against a trip or an opportunity for students to travel abroad. Um, but I'm planning on voting against this tonight, actually. Um, I just, I'm having some really hard, uh, leaps to get to where this is tied to curriculum and, uh, the expense of the trip and four days of really, uh, the conference. So, um, I'll be voting no, but I, um, you know, we'll, we'll support what the committee decides.
I'll make a motion to approve the trip as sent in the pa- the packet.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trizzi, second by Ms. Picard. Any discussion?
Yeah, well, I mean, I understand, um, you know, your point, Ms. Mably, on it and the cost is, is, is a lot. But as you kind of pointed out, it's definitely, it's not taking place during the school year. And if parents want to support this, it's, you know, there is some educational value here. I don't think why, there's no reason why we shouldn't allow it to happen if parents want to send their, their kids to do it. And we have a, a teacher who wants to do it as well. And I think Principal Jackson, um, has looked it over and sees there is some educational value there. So I'm prepared to support it.
And I, I, that's why I'm, I'm torn about this. I totally agree with what you're saying. But I also would like us to, I guess, embrace the idea of, of finding more. We don't find enough opportunities that are less expensive for this sort of stuff. They're all big things. Um, and again, I'm speaking at, from a point where I, my child did go on one of these trips and had a tremendous experience. I saw a capstone project today that a student, um, based on her trip going to the Dominican, uh, to Ecuador last year. Was it Ecuador? No, Nicaragua last year. It completely impacted what she, um, did amazing research on. So I see the value. Um, and I can see that this is, you know, up to people if they want to choose it or not. So I don't know that I would vote against it, but I would like us to look for other opportunities so that everyone could get a chance to possibly take a trip like this.
Well, I think, you know, if we obviously raise money for the scholarships, we could, we could do that. But I mean, taking an airplane ride to, to Europe's expensive and spending ten days there, eleven days there, it's, it's got to be pricey no matter how you slice it.
True.
I think it's, it's a great opportunity. Again, if kids can do it and if kids can raise the money for it, I, I, I support it, so.
I'd just like to add one thing. I think we've seen that these trips are life-changing. One of the things that I've really focused on this year and emphasized with, you know, particularly the high school, because that's why the trips happen, is I can't remember too many trips where it wasn't like, can we suspend the rules? It's if we don't order the tickets by this nee- next week or we have the tickets. Um, so I think what's a good thing for the future is the ability to put some of these out, to have this type of discussion. Um, I'm always, you know, in favor of trips that kids can have, well, an experience like this, it's amazing. Um, but with all the trips and, and this comes up, I think I, I hear worry about cost on most trips that come up. Um, because I feel like trips have been getting more expensive, um, you know, no matter what the venue, whether it's music, whether it's service projects, whether it's world language, um, you know. So I, I, I think that giving you the ability to talk about that will be a benefit. And I think that particularly from the financial aspect, it will be important to something.
Yeah, a- a- again, I think we're talking, you know, whatever this is, a, a twelve-day trip. Uh, and the conference is, you know, really four days. And I think that there are some pretty amazing conferences that are in the United States that, you know, would allow more students from a cost perspective, uh, to attend. And, um, so.
Well, and actually, one other thing just for fodder is I do know that we did approve the trip to go to the D R for next year and they didn't have enough people sign up. So I don't know if, why that happened. Um, maybe it was too short notice, I'm not sure. But that's, again, it doesn't, just because we approve it doesn't mean it happens. So that's another point.
They're not going until, oh, oh, year of the summer, so they can.
Right.
A lot of time to get people and a lot of time.
Right, and to raise the money and things like that.
A lot of time for kids to raise the money.
That's right. Yeah, so that is, that's why it's hard to say no for me. Because if a kid really, this is their one chance, their family will never do, but they want to raise their own money, they're going to work all summer. And that's their goal, then it's kind of hard to say no to that. So that's, I, this is hard for me, this one, so.
Do you have a couple of seconds to think it over?
I already have.
So it seems to me that our role is to watch for safety and appropriateness. Um, and we're not necessarily a values, um, judgment group when we're making our, our vote, um, but whether or not it's been presented to us as safe and appropriate. Um, but I do, on the other hand, really feel like we do have a value statement that we're making. Um, and we, as a community, are setting kids up to continuously compete, um, with the bigger trip. And i- if you don't take a big trip, you won't have anything to write your college essay about. So I hope that we're offering opportunities where we can do things that are simple and that are direct and that are life-changing, um, that are not involved with a lot of money and a lot of time. Um, when we're talking about kids saving up money to do something, I mean, some of our families, the kids are saving up, um, money to do some of the most basic things. Um, we're still charging a sports fee. Um, we're still charging activities fees. If ten kids go on this trip, that's fifty thousand dollars. That's the cost of a teacher. We're still looking at where we'd like to add, um, instructional staff to our district. Um, so I think that's really, um, all things for us to consider as we, as we go forward and, and things that we should ask our educators to consider when they're proposing activities for our kids. Um, you just made the comment that these trips are happening at the high school level. But we did hear a conversation earlier this year about having middle schoolers go out to Yellowstone. So I would just.
I think we had someone a couple, or a year or two ago.
Well, they were, they were right, they were rising high schools.
Right.
Because they were eighth graders. But we were talking, you know, earlier this year about perhaps looking at those opportunities for sixth and seventh graders. Um, so I really do hope that we don't start doing competitive, heavy hitter, high-priced trips at younger ages. But I do feel like my role here has to do with safety and appropriateness in making a vote.
I agree with almost everything everybody said. Um, I come down on this is, it's a choice. Students don't have to go. They have this opportunity. But I also very much agree with what Ms. Mably said in that we should be offering more opportunities. I know there are mission opportunities up in Maine that would cost next to nothing, um, in the summer, where students could go for a week and, and help people that really need help building houses, et cetera. Um, so I, yeah, I think it would be good to explore other opportunities. But I would not vote against something that is not mandatory for students to do. They can choose to go and have this experience or not. But I do think it's important to offer diverse opportunities at costs. Okay, ready to vote? All right, Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
No.
Ms. Picard?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye.
And I would just add, I, I would, I'd be one of those kids in high school that wouldn't have the money to go on this, these trips. Um, you know, I had the good fortune to go to DC. Thank God, not this year, um, with the snowstorm. But in the past, but, you know, there, there are some other trips and opportunities. And I, I think it's something that, you know, I'd like to look at with our principals. Um, so we have opportunities, expand those opportunities, because those opportunities and experiences are life-changing. You know, oftentimes, kids who, um, whether they're, they're, struggle economically, socio-economically, English-language learners, it's their experiences. Um, some of the research is, they're not getting behind the school, they're getting behind without enrichment. Um, and they don't have those opportunities, so.
So I, I hope that, based on our conversation, that maybe we start seeing some other types of opportunities shared with us to consider.
Okay, second reading for the vote for school choice participation.
Madam Chau moved up the committee vote not to participate as a receiving district in the Commonwealth School Choice Program for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Trizzi, second by Mr. McDevitt. Any discussion? Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
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 An aye, five O. Second reading to vote on policy J B A, student-to-student harassment.
Councilor Egan, uh, town council. She's been working very closely with policy V A's on. Ms. Mably.
So at the last meeting, we discussed this policy. Um, you requested that one additional change be put into the policy. And that was the language that says, states in presence thereof, which is now included in the policy. And as was at the last meeting, we had, um, the un, the further definition of harassment is unwelcome sexual advances, requests for sexual favors and other verbal or physical conduct of a sexual nature. And so that brings this up to address those types of issues. I think the school, it's important to note that there are other policies within your school committee manual that deal with sexual harassment and define sexual harassment in very explicit or very detailed terms. But including this language in this policy just clarifies the issue further.
Where, where else in the policy does it describe those in very detailed terms? Do you know?
I believe it's A C A B. And that is included in the second, in an agenda item on the teen dating violence. So we included that reference to that and it's linked to your agenda. And the policy, in the process for reporting, any instances of that is also linked to your agenda.
Does it make sense to add to this update, you know, again, we can't yet because we haven't discussed, but looking down the road, should we adopt the, um, teen dating abuse prevention policy that we have here, linking that reference? should we adopt the teen dating abuse prevention policy that we have here, linking that reference below like some of the others have?
Yes, that does, that would make sense, yep.
Change of motion?
Oh, right. I move to adopt, um, the updates to JBA policy as presented in the pack-in shown here.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Mabley, second by Mr. Trizzi. Any discussion? Mr. Trizzi?
Aye.
Mr. McDevitt?
Sorry, aye.
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 An aye. Five oh. Okay, now we move back to new business. Um, and the first item under this new business is the discussion of the student handbook. So, each year, the committee is required to approve the student handbook prior to the next school year. In the past, we have done it by our last meeting of the school year, but with two meetings left tonight and only one more left after tonight. We, I wanted to throw it out to the group if this is enough time to approve the handbook. We haven't discussed the whole athletic issue, um, so might use some time at our retreat in the summer to discuss this, but as long as we get this approved, I think by August 1st, that gives us time to look at this or, I don't know, I want to throw it out there for your thoughts on this.
Well, I wonder if the change that we just made and other changes that we might be making will impact what needs to be in that handbook so that it might need to be approved at a later date?
So, I, I would just add that, um, changes to the handbook have been made and linked. So, we got input from the different principals and, um, the high school principal provided input with, in conjunction with the high school, school council. And so, those changes were included in the student handbook that was linked and it was linked late in the day, so, but you do have it now. And we have also have, you have the ability to review the handbook as presented because I did include the changes to the JBA in the handbook already that we, before being completely, fully adopted, it's in there as a proposal. And then if those two additional policies are adopted, they can be included into the handbook since this would be sort of the first reading. So, the second reading, it could be in, um, adopted on condition that that is included in the handbook.
Okay.
So, you're saying if we adopted the teen dating abuse prevention policy, then it would just be, it would be the policy from supercise, but would be put into the handbook?
Right, so that could be a part, could be a part of the motion to approve the handbook is that that policy is included in the handbook.
And is the handbook updated throughout the year if we add or change policies? Is the handbook updated? So, say we, we were talking about something in October and we decided to make some changes to policy that impacts what's in the handbook. Is the handbook then updated and, and kept online as a living document or how does that, or does it just wait until the next year?
The problem is the students sign off on it in September, that they've read it.
Right.
So, there's no, if you add something after they sign off on it, they don't have notice that something was added.
Unless we send it to everybody.
Right.
So, it's a, it's a, it's a bit of a catch 22 if we change any policies mid-year?
Right.
But we do, what, do we do policies typically throughout the year?
Yeah.
Yes, we do. And so, those policies are the policies of, so I think that, of the school committee. So, so we always have a look at sort of where, sort of the hierarchy or how things function. So, policies are the broad policies and the school committee adopts them and then they get implemented into the administration and those procedures and regulations sort of get adopted into the student handbook. So, you couldn't really be, the, the regulations that are in the handbook that govern the way the schools function, are gonna continue throughout the year and not incorporate those policies. Like, you, you sort of have to have that bit to incorporate them.
Takes time for things to happen.
Exactly, right.
But our, at this point, I don't believe we print out and hand out our manuals any longer. It's all done electronically, right?
Yes, right, so it's posted online.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, if there was some mechanism, I know you'd have to ensure that be signed off, that would be challenging, I guess, but there's a sub-mechanism to alert people if updates were made.
Well, to a certain extent, all of, any policy that's adopted throughout the year, it's posted on your agenda. You have, uh, you know, a meeting regarding it. You have to, the first reading, the second reading. It's, there's a vote taken and then it's posted on the website. To further incorporate that and have individual people sign off on it, I don't know if that would, I mean, I think they're on notice of the policy that there's a discussion and may be a change.
So, I, I would actually say, I mean, if we are looking at one, two, three potential, uh, two potential changes, then we should probably hold. And, you know, maybe what it is, is, you know, in our next meeting, this, you know, I can't read that from here.
Sixth, I think?
Um, E and F, you know, are, are prior to voting on D. I think the letters are a little out of order there. And then that's our last, you know, vote on that. So, I think we still probably could get it done in early June, but, uh...
You mean have a first reading of the student handbook next meeting?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I think so, too.
Are you saying if you, so a procedural question from the legal aspect. So, if you adopt the policies proposed in the first reading, then your plan, the plan would be for council to implement those, uh, so we have in the handbook? So, that's something you've been working on already?
Yes. Right, so if you click on, I mean, you don't need to, but it is linked right now and so that, in the handbook, the proposed working version of the handbook in, um, the section addressing harassment, the changes that we just discussed that you just voted on are already included in that. And I don't, I can't tell you, I think it's page 10. You can see the change.
And how about the ones that we have on first, that we have on first reading tonight, is that?
That is not in there.
And that's what I was gonna say, but we could work, if we voted to include them, then it could be done before we have to put the handbook in place.
I agree with Mr. McDevitt that, that I'd like to do our first reading next time. And, you know, perhaps continue it into our summer session.
I agree.
If necessary.
Yeah, that would give you time, you know, I think the, the corners get, you know, make sure the, the complies with the policy change or the addition and that it's done in a way so that it goes up to all students, you know, whenever they send it August 1st.
We may want to, at a later point, just look to policy CHCA with that date. Because I, I think honestly, the, um, the process of printing today is probably-
This is why this is like, because it used to print it and it's not printed anymore.
Yeah, just to, to have the date reflect that.
And that's why I think the 30th date, but besides coming to the end of the year, it was also the deadline for the printers, for the calendars.
Yeah.
So, at some point, we might want to look at-
Revise this, yeah.
This is too arch.
For the next, have a first reading at the meeting?
Potentially.
I think, was it on there for tonight?
No, but, no.
This was just a reference.
The approval file, CHCA.
We're talking about this page, just that talks about this process of the handbook?
Change the date 30th date.
That it's too arch.
Oh, okay. I thought, I thought you were gonna first read on that.
No, 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 no.
All these dates are set up based on getting a thing printed that's no longer printed.
Right. Absolutely.
Right, thank you, ma'am. All right, first reading of the physical restraint of students policy JK.
A, A, A.
So, I can sort of address this issue also. Um, so, the, the JKAA right now is incorporated into the student handbook. Exact, exactly as it's shown as a proposed policy for the school committee. So, because it's been in the student handbook and I know it's been in it for at least three years because I try to go back to the student handbooks to find out when it, when it wasn't in there and I couldn't find that online. So, because you review the handbooks each year and this has been included in it and you review and approve, in a sense, the school committee has adopted this policy because it's been, being implemented in the schools. So, I would look at this more as what you're doing is you're codifying the policy into your policy manual versus accepting it as a brand-new policy. Since it's already there and everybody's complying with it. So, it's more of a codification issue than an adoption issue.
Gotcha.
So, we've never officially codified it?
Right.
Well, it's been codified, well, right, it's been in the handbook, but it hasn't been in that, you know, you have that very, I mean, it's not, it's all online, but the policy manual is very large.
Yeah, and I looked at it just to compare what we've had, our old policy. It's, it basically cleans up a lot of frankly confusing language, I would say. And it does take away some things that are no longer, um, and which is what our handbook reflects, no longer acceptable. For instance, um, use of medical, mechanical restraint, medical restraint and seclusion is prohibited. And it used to say unless a doctor's note or unless the parents say it's okay, it doesn't say that stuff anymore. So, with all that, it's been in the handbook.
Right, yes, for years, yep, yep.
So, it's just to, some housekeeping, basically.
Okay. All right, first reading of the teen dating abuse prevention guideline, policy is this, yeah, it's a policy, proposed policy JICK.
So, at the last meeting, we had the, um, the school committee had the Melru, Melrose Teen Dating Abuse Prevention and I said I would, you directed me or gave me some direction in terms of coming up with a policy that was more appropriate for North Andover and we also talked about not, um, because the Melrose Teen Dating Abuse Policy is based on a law that says that it's not required with, for school committees to adopt unless there is funding and since there hasn't been any funding in place, the training aspect of that was, is not something that the school is mandated to do. So, I took that out of the policy just as, to begin the conversation and, and crafted this policy that's before you and you can see it in, um, the orange is additional language that's relevant to North Andover. And it deals with the same issues and it references the fact that we have, the, North Andover has policies currently that deal with bullying, hazing, harassment, and it also has a process and procedure for reporting those issues.
So, one, one thought is while I understand and I, about taking out the, the training because there's no financial mechanism through the state to, to, um, support that. I know a lot of work is already done to try to do this, so I, I would hate to take it all out. I would rather change it to, um, help us strive toward that and maybe, I don't know how you, basically, I have to read it over, but, um...
And I under-
Work toward provide, I don't want to take it all out. I, I feel like that's a, a bad deletion. I, I understand why, but I don't like the idea of taking that away.
And, and I think the way that that can be dealt with, and, and I didn't do it on my own because I wanted to make sure that I had the input from, because I, the health, and I know that there's, it's a part of the curriculum right now and just being a part of that coalition and going to the first meeting, just hearing from the health teacher and the school nurses that it is a part of the curriculum. But I don't have that sort of subject matter expertise that I wasn't gonna craft something to deal with that because I didn't want to impose something that I don't, and that's not really my expertise. So, I think that we can, you know, uh, work with the health department or the superintendent.
Certainly, I mean, you approve policy, but I mean, I think it's critical that we, as we said before, that we enhance those curriculums.
That's right.
Awareness, prevention, education.
And I think that's some of what you're talking about, right?
Yeah, it seems to me that, that when we're talking about the training, we're talking about implementation, we're talking about practice, which is in the hands of the administration versus policy which is in our hands.
And there's legal training which the school goes through.
Right, they already do that.
Which is, I think, referenced, referenced in these other policies too, the A, B, A, C, or A, C, E.
So, I mean, one way that the school committee can work with that outside of the policy is by doing, you know, setting goals with the superintendent, you know, next year.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a plan for us to enhance that curriculum anyway, um, so in terms of the curriculum.
And, and we want to support that.
Yeah.
Right.
In terms of the curriculum in place, I think, you know, it goes back to particularly, you know, what Cheryl was talking about. You know, those relationships and then, you know, how do we expand partnerships and coalitions? Partnerships and memberships with other folks in the communities, partnerships with the youth center, partnerships with, uh, the town community support coordinator, so. That is the plan to go forward, you know, and I think it was really clear from Nurse Bazak tonight and Lombe, Lombe can talk about the life skills, you know, in terms of, you know, all of it, sexual assault awareness. You know, my, I, my youngest is in fifth grade at the Thompson. He had 45 minutes on vaping, uh, the other day. And so, that's all, spot of the stuff for this.
One of the things that I would wonder about, this says teen dating abuse prevention and some of our students are dating before they're teens. So, I might suggest that we change it from teen dating abuse to youth dating abuse. It's not-
Or just dating.
What's that?
Just dating abuse.
Or, yeah, or relationship abuse, but I just, you know, I mean, we have kids that are 10 or 11 or 12 years old that are, that are certainly interested in, in one another.
Well, and that statistic that they talked about, about the texting, sexting was pretty horrifying.
I know we'll be including those components in this, we're gonna bring forward in the fall, anyway.
Any other discussion?
And, and I guess I'm, I'm not trying to totally wordsmith in a, in a group setting, but I, but I heard in our public comment last time that it's not just dating abuse, but it's, you know, maybe it's sexual abuse prevention.
Right.
Because not all takes place within the confines of a relationship.
So, they can just, uh, speak to any policies in which-
Well, that's the one we just looked at, I thought.
Well, in addition to that, uh, a lot, a lot of them are cross-reference.
Right, and those are the policy, policies that are noted and attached, that A, B, C, A and A, B, C, R, which references the process and that's on sexual harassment or any type of dis, um, harassment or discrimination. There's hazing, there's bullying.
So, in this case, really, it is relationship abuse?
Right, because we do have the broad, we, we have broad policies of how students are supposed to conduct each other, how, conduct themselves, how the staff is supposed to conduct themselves and the type of environment you want to have in the school. So, that's very broad and that says essentially you have to treat each other, you know, properly. And then you just go and further clarify and deal with particular issues like the hazing and the bullying and the harassment and the discrimination. And then you get into the sort of dating abuse prevention. So, each particular policy, you're pinpointing one activity. And so, if you want to take this policy and then broaden it out again, then you're almost duplicating your policies.
Okay.
We added this so we could be very specific, whereas a lot of places have stopped here because it falls under it, which we wanted to call it out.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Suzanne. First reading of the superintendent's year-end evaluation and evidence.
So, much like the mid-year and the first read, I provided, um, many links. I had a chance to meet with Matt King today. As you know, um, there are several goals that we set out not only in the beginning of the year, but also together, shared goals. And we talked about maintaining momentum, effective entry setting, uh, effective entry and direction setting, the NISIT program, effective classroom teacher evaluation and visibility. So, certainly take a look at those things as the goals and the evidence provided. So, this being the first read, similar to the mid-year, Beth will be sending out a link like she has in previous years for you to complete. And she can also provide examples. Is there any?
There's tons of stuff there. I looked at it today.
Okay, yeah, so there, there's no one new, uh, recently put on, so.
Oh, right, okay.
But she'd be happy to provide past examples which are publicly documented and archived in, um, the records. And I would say this, that is, it's been a busy care as a first-year superintendent, which certainly had challenges. And they've come with, you know, some serious and significant challenges, particularly for those impacted with those challenges. I mean, opening up the, uh, the Brad Street was a big challenge, not only structurally, you know, with 89 employees and 61 spots, you know, because one component didn't get finished. A lot of site work, you know, um, that we're having done on the town side was really delayed. You know, I think the tar- that we're having done on the town side was really delayed, you know, I think the target was September fifteenth.
The race vault?
Yep, that'll be fine. You know, so, you know, we had particular challenges, you know, the Columbia Gas, nine, nine thirteen, you know, a deficit of almost six hundred thousand dollars as a result of adding programs that we thought would bring in some money that were added last year, that would be a cost savings, but those savings, by the time this was implemented and put in, in late in the year by my predecessor, it was, you know, those didn't come to fruition. Also dealing with and making changes, particularly around policy on sexual assault, and sexual assault awareness has been critical, and my coach reminded me today, for the first time in twenty-five years, I've been, I was sick, I had pneumonia. You know, I guess there's two kinds, you know, good kind and bad kind, I guess I got the bad kind. So, I think a couple of things. One is, I think, in challenging years like this, it gives us as a leadership team the opportunity to lead, and the opportunity to make things better for our students and our community. You know, so having the ability to, for example, with the gas explosion, we really worked hard on emergency preparedness, doing something like no one's ever done. You know, typically you think about evacuating a school, it's one school. You know, we have very elaborate plans, and all those plans are in place, you know, but it also brought together a group of the public safety officials, our leaders, to put together a plan in place. We had to evacuate all forty-nine hundred students at once, like we did Kid Stop that afternoon. Around communication, around rally points, around all those components, and I can't say enough about Chief Gray, Chief McConthy, the town, et cetera. I also think, you know, in terms of the A B E C C, some of the cost overruns, and some of the deficits around special education and that programming, I mean, Andrew Mealy's been instrumental. And I'm looking forward to getting a town manager on board, because they play a vital role in us getting to these goals. I think the work that the committee's doing, with council, around clearer policies, you know, more clarity around that, things that are better for kids, I think, is always critical. And the entry, I met with eleven hundred and thirty-six people, either survey or online, and, you know, this, yeah, in person. Excuse me, survey or in person, thank you. You know, and that came back, as number one is class size, stability in leadership and special education. And we have challenges, we have challenges, we continue to work at class size, you know, it looks like we're going from seventeen to that eleven point two, and we're pretty excited about that. And we're also interested in, you know, really big plans for the future in terms of possibly expanding multi-george, and we could really even bring that number down. You know, in terms of the strategic plan that we approved last July twenty-first, I think it's time to revamp it. We've got to sunset quite a few things. I think that the objectives probably won't change, but I do think the initiatives are critical. And, you know, the mantra of the NISIT program is go slow to go fast. And we know that because we've heard it from, we heard it from Jen, we heard it from Hutch. I don't think we heard it from Hoddle, it might have been a different mantra then. But I think it's critical that the team has an opportunity to, somehow we do all of our P D and trainings and all those things, to have the opportunity to continue to dig into it. Would like to at the next meeting give a brief highlight, because we've really accomplished quite a few things this year, even with significant challenges along the way, and pretty excited about it. And there's a lot of change happening. You know, as you know, as part of, you know, the strategic plan, looking at some review, we've restructured central office, where we eliminated a position of assistant superintendent, hired a special education director. We're going to continue to look at how to be a nimble organization, hire the best and brightest people, so that we can provide customer service and support to the principals, to the teachers, and to the families of North Andover, because that's our mission, if we can do that, particularly for the principals and the teachers, they can best serve the kids. And, you know, recently, I think, many of you know, this week we made an announcement that after twelve years Greg Landry is going to be leaving the Atkinson School to become the interim director of H R. The H R director has decided to go pursue something else. And, you know, I think the ability to bring someone in with that type of experience also gives us the opportunity to expand or change roles slightly. Maybe some more around as a spokesperson, competitive grant writing, those types of things, just like we hired Kristin Ando. Kristin Ando's not only an expert in mathematics, even though she's unbelievable in humanities, and she's our humanities director, she's an E L expert. So, you know, we have to be, look at hiring the best and brightest and putting people in the right seats on the bus. You know, as you know, this year we welcomed myself, George Gonsovs, Sue Donatell, and, you know, we've already made some hires for next year at the Bradstreet, with Dr. Tiffany Goddard, you know, and Greg Landry is an interim. So we'll continue to do that, and, you know, as you look through this, I think that, you know, you'll see some of the really key things that we've been able to do, even with the budget this year, and some of the real highlights around N I S C, around the science, around the A D L, around the history lab, and that. And I just want to say that, you know, I think, as I've said before, I think, I think challenge and, you know, John Kennedy always used to say, and I'm not sure if it's true, because you hear a lot of quotes by a lot of folks, the symbol in Chinese for crisis is two symbols, one equals opportunity, one equals danger. And I think we have a real opportunity to continue to grow. I think we're a stronger unit because of it, I think we're building a strong, you okay there?
I'm down the wrong pipe.
Okay. I think we have the ability to continue to build a strong team. And I've never been more excited and honored to have the privilege to lead, lead this community, because I think that we can do some really special things. I'd have to also say that this is challenging work in any community. And, you know, having a very challenging year, it wouldn't be possible for the things that we've accomplished this year without the team that we have. I mean, Jim Mealy has been amazing as always. I mean, Lorraine Marks, I forgot to mention, she's someone else that we welcome.
I acknowledge you, though, but.
Oh, thank you. Lorraine Marks, yeah, and Kristin Ando, and when you hire folks like that, you know, it's easy to empower, to trust, to know that things are going to get done right, and you're always going to do what's best for kids. So I can't thank them enough, Dr. Straits on her way to another job as the director of a collaborative. But her work, she's not here tonight, she had a, she's out for medical reasons for a few weeks. And then, you know, the support of the teachers and the parents in the community, and the folks that I have the opportunity to interact with. And then most of all, your support, I think it's critical. You know, the support provided by school committee, because we have to be creative in North Andover, and you guys are always supportive of that, and I'm looking forward to a really bright future.
Quick question, because you brought it up, the N I S C study that they've been doing all year, like, did we hear about that in the fall, or?
Yeah, so N I S C, I know, I've gone on a couple of visits and met an assistant chair at one of them up in New Hampshire. I think, Lorraine, the week is October nineteenth.
I am not certain.
Yeah.
But sometime in the fall.
If October nineteenth is a Sunday, that's the day. They show up on a Sunday, and involves the whole community, in fact.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I'm going to ask Bev, and that's a great reminder, Bev, could you check with the high school to see when the school committee has to be available, because there are certain components of governance, and it's really extensive, so they'll be looking for parents and everyone. They're here from Sunday through Wednesday, and that's why I budgeted it this year in the budget, because it's a, it's about a twenty thousand dollar expense, but they accredit every high school in New England, and probably almost all the colleges since eighteen fifty-three. They're doing their self-study and report, they'll go through all of it those three days, and at the end, they give a quick report, which will have commendations and recommendations for each of the standards. And typically, depending on, you know, how, how well the chair writers puts it together with, with all the information, then, you know, it's usually a few months towards maybe even closer to, you know, right around budget time, which I think is.
That's, that's kind of why I asked.
I think it's a really good thing, I mean, I'd say one thing, that the entry this year, like, was totally informing and helped me make some mid, some changes around direction of the budget.
Well, so we'll have it in time for the next, that's what I wanted, you think.
Yeah, that's the hope.
Dr. Gilligan, you mentioned the change of Greg Landry coming to central office. I know you sent out a communication, I can't remember if you outlined a plan for what's going to happen for leadership at the Atkinson in that letter, or if that's going to be coming forward?
Yeah, so I sent it to, Greg sent a, Greg met with staff, I met with staff, Lorraine met with staff, you know, several different times, and so three, Greg sent a letter personally to parents with also a link from myself to parents, and then I've also notified everyone, all the staff in the entire district. So, you know, as the letter indicated, at this late point in the year, you know, a search is not something that, you know, is, is probably feasible, you know, can be a competitive market. I do know that, you know, it's a very strong staff there, but I also know that, you know, as sad as they are to see Mr. Landry go, and the parents as well, you know, the feedback from parents, and I haven't had calls or emails from any of them, and from the staff, is positive, because, you know, sometimes you have to weigh what are the benefits, you know, versus this. So I'm really confident, we posted for an interim principal until filled. And, you know, we've done that quite a bit, quite a few times in this district. But I'm going to be working closely with a couple of people on this, it will be myself, Greg Landry, Lorraine Marks, Jim Mealy, Sue Bayless, whose opinion I value very much, and last but not least, I want to get input from Donna Fleming. I think she's been there probably the longest. So, we're going to have people in, we're going to find someone that has the same core values and that can help us to continue to grow. And one thing I do want to make really clear is, the person that we put in that job can apply for it. You know, that was a question that came up with a few folks that have the opportunity to apply. So, you know, with this one year leave of absence for Mr. Landry, and going into that position, you know, he would have the ability to go back, but I think he's really interested in this career change. He's been a principal of Melrose, he's done twelve years here, twelve years is a long time to be a principal of a school. And he has central office experiences in the Title One's Way at Lowell. So we're pretty excited about that, so we'll open a full search probably, you know, if all goes well, next December.
Okay, thank you, that's very helpful.
Any other questions or comments, Dr. Gilligan?
Thank you.
Okay, is there any public comment?
Yes, there is.
Good evening, we want to wrap this up quickly, because I know everyone wants to get home. My name is Dr. Karen Laurel, I'm at five ninety-one Massachusetts Avenue, and I'm here tonight with my co, some of the co-members of the North Andover Parents and Kids for School Safety. And we're very concerned about some of the things that are happening today. We can't possibly cover this entire document, this document has lots of references, so we, we hope that you will use it as a resource. And so, I've been touched on a, one key thing, because I reviewed your two policies, one about the dating, and one about student-to-student harassment. And so I, so I'm not going to really take time to introduce this, I will introduce it more next time, okay? Because I have consideration for time. But what I do want to make you aware of are some documents that are on page two. An excellent concise guidance for administrators can be found within the Federal Department of Education Office of Civil Rights Checklist for Comprehensive Approach to Addressing Harassment. It gives roughly about twenty different things, and the new one that you updated today, you approved, covers basically one of the twenty items. So there's quite a few that are still missing, and I provide the link for that. We really, as parents and students who are concerned with school safety, we really expect that the North Andover School District to follow it. But throughout here, we try to be considerate of your needs and everything, and we want to work together. But there are a few things that are basically non-negotiable, and, and that's required by law, and we kind of feel that's non-negotiable. Now, we, another thing is, I would recommend that school policy and procedure authors, please follow the recommendations in the document that I have a link to for here. Is, is your school's sexual harassment policy effective? In the Protect Students from Sexual Harassment, a primer for schools. That's really an excellent document for people writing policies and procedures. We're very concerned that, you know, you can have a lot of policies and terrible things happen, so therefore, your policies and procedures are not effective, and we want it to be testable. We don't want to write the policies and procedures, but we want to pose the reasonable tests. For all who don't really understand the problem, which, listening to you guys tonight, we kind of realize you don't, one thing is the, it's been researched, and sex, in schools, sexual harassment and assault occurs in a dating relationship three percent of the time. The remainder of the ninety-seven percent of the perpetrators have no interest in dating their victim. So, you know, that, that has been carefully researched. And so if you don't understand the problem well, a really nice document, and you could include it in your training, is Crossing the Line Sexual Harassment at Schools, and the link is in there. And what I'm going to do is allow our, my fellow members to talk.
Do I have to say my name and address?
No.
Oh, okay, so, you want to start?
So I'm Lexi Regan, I live on eleven Woodbridge Road in North Andover.
We know this, we've gone through this.
Oh, me, okay, but you're saying my.
No, like, you start, yeah.
All right, so, I took a note down specifically, but I think it was the redacted section that we talked about, or something got removed or crossed out, I'm trying, I can't exactly remember the specific thing, where we're trying to, it was removing the specific section saying that we don't need, like, outside help, I'm pretty sure. But we found another source that we possibly used called Safe Bay, which is an excellent, like, source to look at, that provides, that's interested in providing us special stuff without funding required. It's the best interest for all students and staff in the community. It's free, and they're willing to come to North Andover to, like, work with us, and it's a perfect source for addressing sexual harassment within the school system. As well as regarding the coalition meetings with the parents, I think that it should have been broadcasted more, or if moving forward, it could be broadcasted more, because I asked around outside of just the parent, like, some parents that I talked to, and a lot of people didn't even know that it existed or was happening, so I feel like there could be some more promotion regarding that, that could really help a lot of people. And I'm not sure Susan, Susan missed this, but I think that we also addressing that there should be sexual assault and sexual harassment used in the vocabulary more. When she was listing off a few of the vocabulary that was used, it just said harassment, but I think it's important that we return to using sexual assault and sexual harassment within that vocabulary.
Sexual harassment, physical harassment.
Yeah, unwanted sexual base attention. And also, within the policies, we didn't, not see that, where it said that there would be consequences for students that did not follow those policies, and I think it's important that within these policies we address what consequences will be faced, because I think, if the, like, the policies are proposed, but if it doesn't say specifically what will happen, if the students go against it, I think it makes it harder for students to understand what those consequences are. And I think that really needs to be outlined and stated. As we mentioned before, that we need a zero tolerance policy regarding this, and I think that those need to be clearly outlined. And I think, just in general, we want to make sure that this gets put passed for the next student handbook year, because it's, it needs to be represented, it needs to be acknowledged by the students, it needs to be represented. I think us as graduating seniors, we want to make sure that this is put in place so we can look back on all the changes that have happened within the school and be really proud of it. I think to do that, it needs, these changes need to be implemented now, and I know you guys are working on this, but it's, I think we need more of this, and I want to make sure that these policies that are moving forward are carrying that weight, and that needs to be addressed, I think, furthermore. I'm not sure if that, the policies can be tweaked so that it includes that more so, but I think that was my issue. But I know you have some to say as well.
Yeah, and so also, on this seven-page packet, we have a section where there's things that are happening or have happened that we. we have a section where there's things that are happening or have happened that we see as a no, like, that it needs to stop. Um, a big thing for me is that children victims and students have nowhere to go and no one that they can trust within the school system. Um, s- so like, they suffer in silence. And what's really stood out to me is during the nurses' report earlier, it said that sixty, only sixty-six percent of students stated that they had a trusted adult within the school. Um, basically, that should be a hundred percent con- um, considering they all have a guidance counselor that they can go to for stuff. Um, so I found that to be a big problem, that, um, sixty-six percent of, only sixty-six percent of students had a trusted adult. Um, another thing is, um, that we, a lot of us agreed on is that, um, Title IX investigator must be qualified, qualified to run an investigation. Certifications are available online. The investigator can't be, um, a V P. It must be a neutral party with no stake in the outcome. So an independent party, trained, certified, and prefer, um, preferably outside. Um, another thing, um, as of right now, is that within the school system, when a case of sexual assault, harassment, all this arises, I feel like they, parents and families, don't know what to do and don't know who to talk to, and they also don't know where to go. 'Cause I know a bunch, like, all of us have been in a position where something has happened, where we don't know who to report to, who to talk to, or like, what action is gonna be made. And that's also another big thing with students speaking up about, like, their issues with, within the school community. Um, so there's that.
That can be further included within the handbook, I think, that it outlines it clearly for students, since it is something that everyone has to sign off of. It's important so that everyone acknowledges the consequences that'll be faced and where students should go specifically.
And then another big thing, did you mention that? You didn't, okay.
And I, I know within the student coalition that we're working on finding people, a person for every single student in the school, but I think it would need, it needed to be reiterated here, that that is still a necessity within our school, and that we should be working towards that as our community.
Yeah, for, um, to work towards an overall culture sweep within our community. So basically, I think the biggest, like, things is Title IX being implemented into the school system because every student should have access to their student rights, Title IX, um, everything, 'cause I didn't even know about that, and I don't think any of us students here did either. Um, yeah, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, my pleasure.
So we'll be back in two weeks, and hopefully, um, we'll have a longer time to talk, and you will have a chance to look over what we have there. Um, I don't know...
Can I just interrupt you and see if there's any other public comment?
Oh, okay.
Is there any other public comment?
All of the rest of people are from the group.
Yeah, I have something to say. My name's Pamela Emmett. I live at Merle Crest Drive. And my granddaughter is a senior at the Andover High School. She was a girl that was brutally sexually attacked by Eli Tuttle. She wasn't allegedly. It happened, and he was prosecuted. And because of her going to court was the only reason that, when he went to Hampshire and raped another, two, raped a girl in Hampshire, that the Massachusetts, um, uh, the judge in Hampshire saw that he was on probation for what he had done to my granddaughter. It took us eight months in court. She had no support from the school, absolutely none. Now, one person has come forth to try to help her. Are you safe protector? You're not protecting them at all. You're protecting yourselves. The teachers won't even talk to my granddaughter at school. They're afraid to talk to her. I wonder why that is. And I wonder why, if this was your daughter or your niece or anything, would you want to have an apology? Of course you would. You sit here and say nothing. You wouldn't want your child to get an apology? I have talked to you, Mr. Superintendent, about apologizing, okay? And you won't, no, will not give me an answer why these kids don't mean anything to you. You wanna go forward. Before you go forward, you need to go back and fix what you've done. And these kids, uh, need to be helped. And not one word is ever said by any of you in this committee about these kids and what happened to these kids. All you wanna talk about is policies, this, that, that, and this. You should've all been well-educated on Title IX and all the policies that you didn't do, and this was the result of it. This boy has raped at least three girls. You don't wanna use the word rape. You always wanna say harassment. It's sexual harassment. And nothing was done, and you all sit here and you talk about everything, but you can't even apologize for what happened. And you wanna go forward? You can't go forward. You'll always have a black mark on this school for what you, what you have not done. You can't protect these children. These kids have looked up to you. And now they know that somebody's lying. No one's taking responsibility. Do you take responsibility for what was done? Does the principal take responsibility? Does the teacher that made my granddaughter sign this so-called contract, and she was the one that did the investigation of a Title IX, and that's against federal law? Do you know that? You're looking at me with a lot of, uh, questions. Do you have a question about this, what I'm saying?
I'm listening carefully, ma'am.
Okay, well, and you're supposed to report to the state once a year about your, if there's harassment going on in your school, uh, sexual, uh, you know, problems. Not the Andover High School did not report to the state. Zero harassment they reported. And sexual abuse, they reported none. Well, there's one right there. So who's responsible for letting the state know that there was sexual harassment going on at the school? And the teacher that made her sign that had no right doing Title IX. She didn't know what she was looking at. And her Title IX isn't worth the paper it was written on, and that was looked at by an expert. So I ask you, what do we do? Just keep on going like this and let these kids suffer? There's no help for these kids? None of you had reached out to these children? And the teachers don't even talk to her? And you all think that's okay, because you can just wipe it clean and go ahead with your new policies? Well, you can't, 'cause you haven't fixed what you did. But now no one has anything... Can you, can any of you say anything, or you're not allowed to? What is it? I'm asking you. You seem to talk to everybody else that was up here about all kinds of trips and everything else. We're talking about kids that were sexually ase- attacked by a not the end of school boy, and people in this administration knew about him. You just wanted to sweep it under the rug. It's not going away. It's not going away, and we're not going away. So I wanna know, I'm gonna ask you, why won't there be no apology for these girls? They looked up to you people. Now they have no respect for you. Why should they? When, when you, they were, you guys were needed. You weren't there. Everything was secret. She was told to be quiet. Don't say anything to anybody. You won't graduate. I had a teacher call me a few days ago, tell me that my granddaughter, uh, had to pass in a certain science paper, and it came with, "Or she will not graduate." I'm sick and tired of hearing that threat. Just sick and tired of it. What that girl was put through, if you know anything about rape or anything about sexual attack, what she was put through, and then had to come to school and face the guy that did it to her every single day. He was allowed to play in sports. He was allowed to do whatever he wanted. She was harassed by the teachers. And I wanna know, why is there no apology? Do you have any feeling, any compassion? Can somebody answer me? You can't answer me. You can answer for, for this group. Where's the compassion for the kids that this happened to? No one's gonna answer, right?
During public comment, it's not the practice to answer.
I don't care what the practice is. What's the practice for these kids to get raped by one of your students and then try to keep it quiet for almost eleven months that she had to go to school with that? Yes, I think she deserves an apology and a hell of a lot more. And I have no respect for any of you, 'cause you can't speak up. I don't know what you're afraid of. Maybe you're afraid of losing your job. Maybe a few people lost their job because there are people that are responsible for what happened, but nobody wants to bring them forward, and you're not making anybody accountable in your administration for what happened to my granddaughter. And you will all stay silent. And no one will speak up. Nobody, nobody has the guts in this room to speak up on their own. Do you have anything to say? I'm talking to you.
I heard.
Please give me the respect to answer me.
I'm certainly listening to everything you've said.
I need an answer. Why is everything swept under the rug? No one's taken responsibility, and some teachers are even laughing about it, thinking, "Oh, that'll just, it's gonna go away." And I can't name who the teacher is. I'd love to. So what do y'all think? Nothing? She's no getting an apology? You people are a disgrace. Now you see what they are?
Is there any other public comment?
Why bother? You won't answer. Did everybody get that? Everyone answered. No apology, no nothing.
All right, seeing none?
I'm sure she would quite love to hear what happened here tonight.
Make a motion to adjourn, ma'am, Chair.
So you are disgusting.
Motion made by Mr. Treasi, second by Mr. McDevitt.
And never have the kids...
Mr. Treasi?
Oh, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye.
One person, look at that, not one person. Speak up.